To the flag of the United States of America, we are the republic of which stands our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand in the room of silence to honor our former service members. Thank you for coming to see us today. Back to the next meeting. The proposal of three firefighters, Christopher Weber, Ryan Zhang, and Charles Rosenberg. Are these members here?
Yes, they are, Mr. Mayor. We currently have Chris Weber and Ryan Zhang here. But this time.
Would you like to give a brief bio on each one?
Absolutely. Christopher Weber is a graduate of the University of Scranton and the University of Connecticut, where he received his bachelor's and MBA respectively. He currently works as a senior analyst in Manhattan. Chris comes in with a wealth of experience after serving in the Port Washington Fire Department for over ten years before he has finally relocated into Grand City. He is excited to have the opportunity to contribute to his new community, build upon the rewarding experiences from his previous department. Charles Rosenberg, who unfortunately is going to be here tonight, is a graduate of the Grand City High School, is currently attending the University of Arizona. He is eager to join the Fire Department and wishes to give back to the community in which he currently lives. Ryan Zhang immigrated to the US and graduated from high school in Japan. While attending Stony Brook University, worked several jobs throughout his time there. He went on to work as an auditor at accounting firm, a job he currently holds today. He joined the Fire Department because he wants to learn more about the society, meet new friends, learn skills, and contribute to his new community.
Congratulations. We thank you for your service and volunteerism. Do we have a next motion for approval on the firefighters? Um, second, both favor? Thank you very much. As you continue, I'll be holding on upon the front heads. We did a commission of tasks first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with point number one. Perpetual destruction, I was asked into a study and review of that area. I did it, I went back twelve years. There's been two recorded accidents at that location. One was a vehicle backing into another vehicle. The other one was a minor car accident closer to North Avenue. Neither accident involved the vehicle turning from asphalt roadblock. I did survey the area and observed a motor is coming into the lot from asphalt roadblock. It went very slow because of the close proximity of the walls to the curb. And they go a little wide, so we don't think there's a problem with sight distance at that time. They, we looked at it when it was being pulled by some line, but that seems more than wide. We didn't see an issue. We ultimately made several turns ourselves, putting it in. The one thing I did notice was there's a lot of shrubs and trees and ivy growing in the area. And that's, that's the one area maybe of concern because it's growing outward and upward. And it's also growing on the wall outward towards where the cars are coming in. So that could potentially be an issue, especially soon because it is growing and it's getting thicker. But it doesn't look like now or as like the wall causes issues. There's a wall on the other side and it doesn't look like that was involved in the accident scene.
So is somebody in front of you?
Actually, we need somebody to remove. We actually need to remove everything. I have photographs if you want anybody to see it, but assuming the removal, assuming the renovation of the wall is to proceed, it cannot with any of the shrubs in place occur. So either way, if we want to see a wall, we can't put shrubs in front of it.
The other side doesn't really have any shrubs. A little more construction stat I believe.
Any other comments, Mr. Mayor?
I have one other comment. Item number twelve, I'm requesting permission to send offices up to Syracuse. It's the only location the state of New York certifies our scales, wing scales for commercial vehicles. This has to be done, so they are certified for court. If we don't get them certified, the tickets may not be able to hold valid during the court session. So we have to walk there twice a year normally to certify them. And we've been very, we've been very, done very well on court because of that.
That's all, sir. Thank you. On this, how did you perform?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, board of trustees. The Fire Department has nothing formal on the agenda. However, I'd just like to bring two points to the board's attention. In the month of July, the department responded to 106 photo alarms, ninety-seven of which were signal aids or lesser alarms, people are not aware of. Two were mutual aids to surrounding departments. Two were extrication calls where we utilized our jaws of life to move patients from vehicles. And five of them were our general alarms. Two of those included two working house fires in the month of July. One was caused by a lightning strike and one was caused by faulty electrical wiring in the basement. Luckily, I can report that both fires were contained to the reformation and no injuries occurred at those fires. Another point I'd like to bring to everyone's attention is, I believe this is our last meeting until after nine eleven. The department will be hosting its annual ceremony on Sunday evening at six PM. We invite the board, as well as all the residents in town, to attend. It usually takes about half an hour and only at six PM out here by the villages above.
That's, excuse me, that's this Sunday?
September eleventh.
Oh, September eleventh. It falls on a Sunday, so.
Yes, it falls on a Sunday, sure.
I just wanted to comment if I may. Just for those that didn't realize, there was a serious fire that I want to commend the police department and the Fire Department on an electrical wire that fell. And it was a, I actually got a call from the commissioner and you could hear the wire sparking. Could have been a disaster in the area because if the fire went down the other electric lines, it could have affected all the houses in that area. So the police blocked off the area, they secured the area. There was a good Samaritan named Christine Bruce Torino who actually reported it. The mayor called me, I mean, the commissioner called me and said, luckily a good Samaritan came by and reported it. But it could have been a serious situation. You guys did a great job. The other thing was the utility firm, I guess, the commissioner had pushed hard to get them there right away because they initially said they'd do it in three hours. So I just wanted to commend and thank you for keeping everybody safe and doing such a tremendous job. I mean, that could have been very, very serious.
Thank you, sir. And just to echo your points, we'd like to thank the police department as well. We've worked great together over the years and look forward to continuing that relationship. So, thank you.
I gave one thing, being a former firefighter, that wire was sparking real bad and the person had a lot of plants and trees. And they did a tremendous job. That fire was going to go to the house. When you fight electrical fires, you can't have straight, you can't, you have to do certain things. They contained it and it was very difficult. It was about ninety degrees that day. And what they did was tremendous. That, that wire was about about three quarters of the fall. If it hit those main wires, we would have a problem. But they had a plan in place, they were ready. I was very impressed with the overall performance.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next would be, it was treasure, I mean.
Good evening, Mayor Trustees. Item number one under finance. Board authorization requested to appropriate three hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eleven cents from the reserve for compensated expenses for four employees who have left Village Service. Item number two, it's a request to authorize the attendance of a client employee, Kevin Mitchell, who's an accountant, to attend the night home annual fall training school. This is training that is hosted by the New York Conference of the Airs, as well as the Office of State Control and Service. And this training will involve the Saturday School of Work. Item number three is board authorization. It's requested to approve a proposed act settlement for retail property trusts for a property located on Vic Road. And this has been reviewed by council, proposed by council. Item number four is a transfer of funds for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year in the amount of ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and six cents to the buyer and police retirements account. This is, as a result, the increase in this retirement expense is due to the settlement of the HVA contract, which stands in a couple of years. The payouts, the retroactive payments caused the increase to the retirement system.
Next, please, item number seven.
Good evening, Mayor, board of trustees. The Fire Department doesn't have anything on the formal agenda tonight. I just wanted to give the board a little briefing on the update on St., I'm sorry, on the Edgemere Firehouse. The construction, one, phase one, one A, the completion date would possibly be tomorrow. End completion, we do a walkthrough with the chief tomorrow morning at some time. And we'll do a full walkthrough. All the garage doors are working and outbuilt and we'll try to move the apparatus this weekend and try to remove the cage and the offices and try to complete that phase one A and shortly move on to the phase one B.
So all the materials gone, are these taken out?
Yes.
That's going to be tomorrow?
Tomorrow will be our walkthrough to turn over the project.
Anything else?
Oh, that's it, yeah.
What time was that?
Tomorrow morning, dawn, ten o'clock.
It's defined time is ten o'clock. I'll be there.
Okay, seven o'clock?
The other, on that particular topic, as Fire Commissioner, I had the opportunity to immediately change with regard to the study that was previously done and the plans that we saw before. The renovation and implementation of that plan with regard to Edgemere is one that has to be done in stages. And I believe the plan in which there's the wing placed on the west side would be the next possible stage for the renovation of that building, which we do need to get into service before it gets too cold out there because fire trucks with water in them do not like being cold. So we'll, I thought, we're going to either tomorrow at ten o'clock or some other time. If we can meet, we can then discuss and show how, what type of construction drawings need to be done for that particular extension to the fire, to the firehouse.
Absolutely. Just to answer your question, on activities one D, we're going to have to put out another RFP for the design of possibly that option three that we observed at the last meeting and get some firms in to give us a proposal on that design. We reach out to a couple of firms that we've worked with in the past. For example, Cameron Engineers, Old Structures, who's done that report, we have a structural report, and get some prices on that construction part of that project.
Other commentary is that in order to organize for the future, the possibility of having the same garage for bay might be, or might fit at station three, so that the fire safety plan, one of the recommendations of having the ability to house a unit in both the east and west, both two types of apparatus, will be an opportunity that the construction cost can be similar than you will be able to fracture it more.
We'd be trying to explore that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, next is recreation, Commissioner Paul, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you and good evening, everyone. Recreation has three items on the formal agenda tonight. First one being number eighteen, which is replacing the flag poles at St. Paul's School and the Community Park. We're requesting transfer of thirty thousand dollars from contingent into recreation maintenance plant to expedite the replacement of these poles. Pole at St. Paul's School is approximately a hundred and ten feet tall. It is extremely difficult to service and extremely expensive when we have to change a rope or a pulley. So we are going to be putting in a, like a smaller pole there. It will still be large and impressive, but it will take us out of the two thousand dollar per visit range when we have to have something done. We have two bids to be awarded tonight. Number nineteen is to replace the flooring at the Senior Recreation Center. We've been discussing this for about two years now and we have a good plan in place. We went out to bid, we got very good price from a contractor that we know who does good work. And we are requesting to authorize transfer of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funding for this project and then to award the bid to Preferred Construction, Inc. They are the low bidder for a total cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Number twenty, again, we've been talking about this for some time. It's the replacement of the HVAC system at the senior center. We had previously requested and granted authorization to use the ARPA funds for this as well. We have gone out to bid and we are recommending that award, award the bid to Energy Mechanical, Farm and Dale. They are the low bidder for one hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Thanks to Treasurer Irene Wu for getting ARPA funds available to us and for Anthony and his crew for putting the plans together, getting the bids out, and more importantly, checking the references on all these guys. As the board knows, the initial installation of the HVAC several years ago on renovated building was not done quite to spec. So we wanted to make sure that we got it right this time. And the engineers have done a great job in reviewing those plans and we're very comfortable with both of these members. That's all we have on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake, do you have any update on a young man who got injured on Tuesday?
Yes, as many of you may have heard, we did have an incident at the pool on Tuesday evening. A twelve-year-old young man decided, I guess, to take a leap off of the tower for the water slide and went straight down onto the concrete. Yeah, fortunately, somebody was watching the young man because he ended up with bumps, bruises, cuts, and contusions, but no broken bones, no fractures, no head injuries. He is stable and doing well. And we spoke with his mother yesterday afternoon and again this morning, and he seems to be doing fine. We should note that, yeah, this was, this was out of, twenty-seven years we've been running that water slide. And this is the first incident we've had that was more than a cut toe or a bumped head. So we had great cooperation from the police department. They were there, Johnny on the spot. Commissioners guys always do a great job for us. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention our longtime lifeguards, Joe McDonough, Ann Sullivan, and our head lifeguard Danielle, all of whom have worked at the pool for thirty-five years plus. They had equipment out just about the same time as he hit the ground. Everything went like clockwork. Training and preparation that we do every year really paid off. And we have a nice young man that's going to be fine after all this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, DPW Director, Anthony DeRosa, please.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. DPW also has several items on the agenda this evening. Item thirteen is GIS and record plan review and bathroom renovation at Stewart Avenue Park Conference Station. Transfer of funds, engagement professional services. Board authorization is requested to transfer fifteen thousand dollars to engineer contractual services from engineer rated salary to fund H2M GIS support services related to review consolidation of scan records and other engineering services required by the village. Board authorization is also requested to engage H2M architects and engineers to provide GIS support services related to review and consolidation of scan records for a total fee of five thousand, five hundred dollars. This is mainly for software upgrades and support mapping conversions, lead inventory updates, and to enable mobile access. Board authorization is also requested to engage L-Chain with Clean Associates to design bathroom renovations for Stewart Avenue Park Conference Station for a lump sum fee of seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Item number fourteen, traffic commerce satellite study. Requesting a transfer of funds and engagement in professional services. Board authorization is requested to transfer ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from contingent to engineer contractual services for the traffic commerce satellite study. Board authorization, it is also requested to engage Creighton Manning Engineering to prepare a traffic commerce satellite study at a cost of ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is a request from the Traffic Commission. Item number fifteen is water supply emergency response plan and vulnerability assessment updates for engagement of professional services. Board authorization is requested to engage H2M architects and engineers to prepare the updated emergency response plan, EPR, and vulnerability assessment, EA, for a total cost of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. This is for the New York State Sanitary Code of Public Health Law, which requires updates for the state health review every five years. The last update was in twenty-seventeen and the next update is due to the State Health Department by January of twenty-twenty-three. This engagement includes the EPR update, the ERP update, the vulnerability assessment update, and also pandemic and cybersecurity update. Item number sixteen, street lighting maintenance, twenty-twenty ratification and extension of contract. Board authorization is requested to ratify an extension of the existing street lighting maintenance, twenty-twenty contract with Anchor's Electric Service. The current contract expired on August tenth of twenty-twenty-two and it is requested to extend the existing contract on a month-to-month basis while a new contract is sought through competitive bidding. Item number seventeen is water main replacement, Clinton Road and Stewart Avenue, engagement of professional services. Board authorization is requested to engage H2M architects and engineers to design the replacement of approximately twelve hundred feet of existing water main along Clinton and Stewart Avenue for a total cost of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Item twenty-one is award of bids. And this is for the Garden City Public Library, HVAC replacement. Board authorization is requested to reject the sole bid as with all the budget amounts. And board authorization also requested to redid the project. Item number twenty-two, new roofing system at the Garden City Municipal Yard, central garage and park's garage, Cherry Valley Avenue. Board authorization is requested to approve the amending of the bomb resolution adopted on June eighteen, twenty-twenty in the amount of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars relating to the replacement of roof, of the roof at the vehicle storage garage for an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety thousand as provided by board council. Board authorization is also requested to transfer two hundred thousand dollars to DPW Yard Roof Replacement from Frickworth Capital Account due to the additional funding needed to award the bid. And also part of this, board authorization is requested to reject the bid from Long Island Roofing. They were the low bidder and they did not meet specifications. And board authorization is requested to award the bid to the second low bidder, MDB Construction, for a total cost of six hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Item number twenty-three is mixed broken asphalt rubbish removal. Board authorization is requested to award the bid to expedite trucking and container services for item number five to be ordered on as needed basis on unit costs, estimated cost of one hundred thousand dollars. That is all for DPW. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Irene, just curiosity, very comfortable that this will kind of work under our budget? There's a lot of money going out here.
Yes, actually, Mr. Sponsey, Justin Beaman and I, we do all these capital projects. These are mostly capital projects. And all these projects are funded or will be funded with the board approved transfers.
Okay, very good. And can you just update for those that aren't aware, some of the government monies that were received, you know, that were applied for every day towards our budget?
Sure. So as is on the agenda, ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act. The village receives a total of about, a little over two hundred million dollars over the last two years, which the village has allocated for three projects now. So the village has that funding available for new projects that are, are good for the community. So there were three projects that were identified that would fall under that category. The village also worked very closely with FEMA to obtain FEMA reimbursements for multiple instances. FEMA was providing reimbursements for COVID-related costs over the last few years. We're still currently receiving some funding for that, or reimbursement of expenses. And we also apply for tropical storms, IAS. We received a significant amount of funding for costs incurred during those, during that disaster. And we're also currently working with FEMA in terms of getting some reimbursements for the St. Paul's roof project that was recently completed.
Excellent, that did work, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Anthony, just quickly on the satellite study. Just so everyone's aware, is that going to be satellite village-wide on the traffic, the traffic commerce?
The satellite, yes. Oh, yes, okay, sure. The satellite study is an outgrowth of the Central District Traffic Commerce Study on the roads to Leon, which emanated from the Cathedral Road Line on the county road. So the Traffic Commission had asked for satellite studies to incorporate the neighborhoods and rest of the village. Creighton Manning originally had secured a sixth neighborhood whose characteristics were pedestrian-heavy around schools and parks. Commissioner and I, as with all previous studies, read through the proposal, called a vacuum and adjustments. The commissioner's knowledge, extensive knowledge of the traffic patterns in the community, we added a seventh neighborhood study because the commissioner suffered a little cut through throughout the village. So that study was approved by the Traffic Commission and Chairman Kelly had asked to have it placed on the agenda. Just as a point of due diligence, which we did with the previous studies, I'd asked Creighton Manning's position as a professional courtesy, if I could black out their number and circulate their proposal to other engineer firms, which I did. And we did that originally for the first study we did again. And they have been very competitive. I sent it out to the usual engineer firms, Cameron Engineering, LK and May Associates, the EVM, the Lior Group. So LK and May, they've disposed of that hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Cameron Engineering's got a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. I couldn't find the EVM, I'm sorry. There was one, Lior Group, did pay the seven thousand dollars. But for the seven thousand dollar difference, I don't think it's wise to change horses. The Creighton team, we saw this whole cell phones. The Creighton team, I think we're very close with the village and Traffic Commission and the commissioner and myself. So for the seven thousand dollar difference, I recommend the board go with Creighton.
Excellent, thank you.
So this is a long study?
Yes, the study, the study, the study involves looking at the conditions. That includes signage, the road network, pedestrians, volume points, and, and, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an engineer, but they're taking within the central district and overlaying it on these other areas. So Mont section is one area, and then west roads, east of the High Park Road. They're all diagrammed and studied, but they're actually color-coded, seven areas. Now, one neighborhood, I think they're all the same, but they do have different characteristics. Each has its own.
There's different volumes of traffic.
Different volume, different traffic, and there's the road networks that the roads are wider or the narrow, get shorter, more stops on. So take all those back into consideration, they would make recommendations to the Traffic Commission, to this board, that certain treatments can be applied, whether it's hatching out the road, maybe an hour, bump outs, speed humps, whatever they are. And then all those recommendations also follow DOT standards. And then all those recommendations also follow DOT standards. For instance, can't put a speed hump too close to a corner on top of the driveway. So the proper distancing, all that stuff is evaluated, it would come back. And then I would think the next step for the Board would be, or the Traffic Commission actually has asked for this, and we have the fourth, and we're getting, I think that might be on September fifteenth agenda, if we pursue it. But rather go right into permanent infrastructure changes. We would step into it like with a temporary change. So for instance, in the central district, a permanent change on the selected areas on the roads higher than one hundred thirty thousand dollars, whereas a temporary non-permanent placement of these treatments would be about forty thousand dollars. But I think you can measure if any treatment is comfortably effective itself.
So you do a mock-up, building changes to the infrastructure, the roadways?
We did temporary mock-ups, rather than do the permanent one. And you actually see, does it do what we expected it to do? And you can measure that and say, this was very successful. And then you can say, let's go forward with full or permanent.
So this proposal, right now, to our meeting included?
No, this is just, this is just to replicate in these other seven non-central areas, the traffic commerce potential.
The difficulty that I see happening with the proposal is most of it has to do with taking numbers, measurements, and it's very short, if not devoid, on recommendations. I mean, in looking at the proposal, if one was to ask them of the options that are possible, if you look at a map of Garden City, and you say, this is the outline of the streets, without doing any studies whatsoever, and without consulting or getting the data from Commissioner Jackson, what would possible options be? So what they're saying is, we want to do a study first, and then tell you what you can do. And in this particular case, since I believe if I recall correctly, Commissioner Jackson said, we had traffic issues when you were first on the job, and it has only gotten worse. So if traffic is a problem in all of the village, my question really is, instead of paying for a study, we need to do calculations and outsourcing, because one of the things is eight thousand dollars for them to outsource people to count cars. My question really is, go to the end of the chapter of the book and say, assuming there is traffic, what would be possible options? Give me two, three, or four, so that we have an idea where we are in fact going to go. And that's the problem that I have with the studies. It doesn't articulate where we're going to be at the end of the study and paying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
What's the first of the three sections on that?
It's ninety-four thousand seven fifty, first, I think, was telling. It's only for the first, I did not need a subsequent to. The Traffic Commission had asked, supported there, some of the things they were hearing in the audience, they had asked Creighton Manning to insert a couple of other possible objectives in there, and they priced those in for Mr. Kelly. Chairman Kelly has been, because I'm generally the only question, the first of the three alternatives, which is the bulk of this study.
Just to some of those points, what is on the agenda today is, for the three other sections, what was already done in the central section, and the price is comparable per section to what was done in the central section. If you look at that study, as far as, you know, just give us the fixes at the end. I think the process they go through includes community input. They want to know what types of methods would be well-received, we would want, before they start making the recommendations. And I think community input early on is going to be really important to having a successful study. Another thing we've talked about with the Traffic Commission is, once we have the whole village studied in this way, I'd like to see us, our village, having like a plan for the whole community like some other communities have already. And you can't get to that unless you have the areas all studied. And Bronxville is, and I see a resident here who's been talking with about this there. That's an example of a community, if you look at, they don't have speed humps, for instance. They have a policy, if you think, you know, you want speed humps on your block, the engineers have set out the details if you're not in a fire route. You know what I mean, if you were this many people on the street, they also decided wanted, they have policies to have speed humps added or to have one removed. So those types of, like giving residents options, because I think traffic is one of the number one complaints we get in the village right now, and it's traffic on the side streets. And the reason to focus on the side streets like this is we have control over, we can make decisions, we can put policies in place. So the hope is that after we finish these three other sections, and it's no more money than what we spent per section already in the central, we'll be able to put together for residents a, you know, a plan or policies so that residents who have complaints of speeding on their block know what the alternatives are, options.
Just so the Board has all the information available, two things. From a cost basis, the cost of this per section is much less than the central district. And there are some economiescales, because as to Trustee Truitt's point, there's only so many things you can do. So some of the things we've learned in central district are transferable to different neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods themselves may have different characteristics that favor one another. I also want to let you know, as with all Traffic Commission phone calls at any time, takes topics on agenda, they may need to go to special. We have Creighton Manning, if you'd like, Mr. Sciano, to add anything as far as what's the levels, I think, but that's a decision from the Board to me.
I have a couple comments. I'm in totally agree with Mayor that we have to look at the whole village, not just central, because of, you know, a lot of the things that have come into, you know, brought to our attention. But Commissioner Jackson, considered you an expert in this area. Can you opine on what Bruce said versus doing the study? Give your opinion on what you recommend? Who wants the mic first?
Both valid points. Like I said, you know, traffic was an issue, and it's still an issue. I've been here a long time. They call me a asshole. But when we were first going over these plans, and we decided that some, you know, you can transfer a lot of areas to other areas, but then you have the windy roads like in the Mont section, stuff like that. So, you know, I always have ideas, you know, everybody knows I have a lot of ideas of how to initiate traffic. But I guess, you know, public input is always important, and that's one of the factors that keeps the board on this. But we do have an active Traffic Commission, but those are handles that. It's, sometimes there are suggestions that may help you, or may not help you, or maybe we have experience already, and, you know, it's tough when you deal with a lot of cars. We are, you know, we have a lot of stop roads, a lot of traffic. And, you know, sometimes you get, you're at the point where there's only so much you can do. But you work real hard at controlling it, this is the penalty, traffic enforcement. And I think these plans are also addressing some of these side street issues that are hard to get to from a place.
So it'd be money well spent here.
I think it's, well, like, at least it gives you an idea of where you have them, and are you different than other neighborhoods? Are there really areas that can be fixed? I mean, you might get to a point where you say, listen, they might, or their studies and expertise might say, what you have here is not an issue. Maybe you might get to that point, too. So sometimes you hear what you don't want to hear, or hear what you want to hear. But they confirm what we already know, or they bring up something we don't know. That's one of the studies. And a lot of studies.
Speed is still a big problem in the village, right?
I just met with, you know, I'm with school around the corner. I just met with every chief in Nassau County today. I organized a meeting with Commissioner Ryder, and at the end, we were talking about helping traffic. And every single chief has the same complaint. It's, you know, something else. One of the committees, I think, accidents are way down from pre-pandemic. So I'd like to turn it to my officers. But it is an issue that every single police committee talks about. And we had the state troopers there, too. The state troopers, that we have an issue of engaging all of these departments in an active shooter or a serious event like that. And they were talking about traffic issues also. Different issues, but it's all about traffic. So it's been something that's really come to the forefront since COVID, and we're all grappling with that situation. But there's some jobs that fell about forty-seven percent down in tickets and everything else in close to COVID. We're actually up. So we'll continue to fight it and do the best we can.
In fact, your numbers are impressive. I know you've worked really hard in your department. And I think this week is a special week where you got a lot of attention to it, am I correct?
Yes, it's speed away this week statewide. In fact, I'm on the state boards, and they asked me to go up to Suffolk County. I don't know if you heard the story, Suffolk County officer was too in traffic. He got run over by a speeding auto. He almost died. He's due to miraculous recovery. And I represent the Nassau County and New York State Chiefs at this conference. But it's speed away this week. We have officers assigned to that. We're using great money, and also we'll be using great money at the start of school year. We were able to purchase some decent money on grants, and now the helpless protection comes out. Because there's nothing more important than our children. And every year, we try to, you know, enforce speed and the bus and stop signs and bus stops, stuff like that, any violations that would help our children. So between speed away this week now, it's kind of impressive to set up for the school enforcement. And I believe that's why they moved it back was earlier. And they moved it back closer to school season, I think that's the reason for it. And then we're going to follow up with the main theme like that. Press releases for DWI weekend, Labor Day weekend is a holiday. That weekend, also, people like to drink and hopefully not drive. But it's the end of summer, and sometimes it celebrates to get a lot of heat. And so we'll have extra people out those days to add basically what that press conference about.
And you had some impressive statistics. I don't know if you have them on the top. You haven't ever read some of the number of tickets you've been giving out to someone?
Yeah. Well, based on similar to last year, similar to about eleven thousand tickets. Accidents are holding pretty good, still below pre-pandemic levels. And there's less will cause on road and, but we'll hold it up. We're going to see what's filed every day.
You did a good job. I have one last question. If you said there's another firm that said it's lower in fee by seven thousand dollars?
So Learwood, it was eighty-seven or eighty-seven-five, it's about seven thousand dollars less.
We can go back to Creighton Manning and see if you can negotiate something similar?
I can do that if you want to. Yes, I can do this.
Okay, any other questions?
Just want to make a comment, Mayor, I want to commend you for your idea of reusing the old bricks from Old Den Avenue Bridge and having it recup. I think it looks great. That's the nicest part of the bridge.
Thank you. We're just trying to work through the aisle road, which is not easy.
No.
We're still working with them, so, yeah, we're trying to be sustainable. Hopefully they'll listen.
In the sidewalk, we're sort of in that street walking.
Yeah, well, we need to do sidewalk, to provide protection.
Yeah.
There's no protection.
Oh, is there?
That's the next detail, the example book.
Okay, good. People are using it now.
Protection has to be there, definitely.
All the good trusty.
No, around, maybe more times? On the, I don't know.
I have a couple, man. I want to comment on one proposal before the board's on it. That is the water main design for the water main from Clinton, going to the south, Commercial Avenue. That's a four-inch main coupled with a ten-inch main. Four-inch mains, seven years ago, eighty years ago, it's a bottleneck. We're bringing a twelve-inch main in there. There's another water main and a valve going from Clinton Avenue to the village line, which is basically where the back entrance portal field is. That's currently a six-inch main. Upgrading that to a twelve-inch main, these things are modernize our water distribution system. It increases our ability to move water across the village in case you have a wealth type problem. Right now, I can't move water from west to east or east to west as quickly. It also increases pressure, and also improves fire safety. And I want to point out that the section in front of Five Fifth Street Avenue, that section will be appropriated for them. It was part of their water availability letter, which was designed by the H2M junior. Okay, so we will be a portion that paid for. I don't know the exact length, it might be a hundred and fifty feet.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet, I can see that. The other thing I want to just update the Board on, only because it was a big topic, this time this environmental advisory board meeting. And Trustee Flanagan is chairperson, is fully aware of what's going on with this. But back in October last year, the village was notified by a parent of a pregnant woman about high blood levels. She was pregnant, Timmy's pregnant, and her medical visitor came with high lead levels in her blood. Nassau County Health Department was notified by law by the doctor. The county started doing some research, and these are, we have a call from the mother. I immediately tested the water in the village system, water going to the system, it's lead-free. We've tested water coming out of the hydrant, it's lead-free. We contacted the county, notified the Board. Fast forward to around December, January, I asked for corrosion studying, which hadn't been done since nineteen ninety-one, when the original lead copper rule from the EPA was issued. And corrosion study was called for at the time. When I found that we hadn't done one in thirty years, I asked for corrosion study back in late December, early January. Anyway, because of the problem we've been having, and water's corrosive by nature, by the way. Water is just corrosive by nature, and Long Island Road is corrosive. So we deal with that by adding things like caustic soda. But nonetheless, with this problem being, it's still with us. And we submit the corrosion study to the county health department, and they allow us to add, what's known as orthophosphates for water. It's being designed now by H2M. Orthophosphates are commonly used in food industry, from the beverage industry, found toothpaste in higher concentrations, and we're using. So it's proved by EPA, it's safe for consumption. But the reason I'm telling you this now is because we're in a new phase with the health department. Because of the lead and potable, because we've had this problem, back in nine-year-old, first lead and potable came in, the village and all communities had come up with sixty homes, sixty homes that had to be comprised of lead service lines or plumbing that had solder and lead and solder built between nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-six. At the time, we passed that test. And because we passed it, we were allowed to go down to thirty homes, and we could do it every three years. It's called the triennial lead and copper test. We passed it every year for right up to two thousand twenty. When this problem came up in two thousand twenty-one, the health department asked us to go back to the original sixty homes. We recently just tested sixty-five homes. And you have to pass the ninety percentile, so you can't have more than six houses that exceed the level, which is fifteen parts per billion. We exceeded it, so now, because we exceeded it, we're going to notify all residents, all our customers. So I want to tell the Board, the full Board, and we have a large constituency here tonight, that you will receive in the mail, Honor Battle, August thirtieth, a letter, which is written predominantly by the health department. And just telling you that lead is not something you want to ingest in high quantities, or at all, that you should test the water in the home, and there'll be information there about that, that you should consider using bottled water or filtering up lake water. That's the solution, to get the lead service line out of your property, because removing the lead is better than filtered water. Nonetheless, the first step is we have to follow this directly by the county. They'll be getting information from us. The corrosion control study that we did in January, the county was going to ask us for, since we already did it, we were able to get approval for it until October fourth. They now okay orthophosphate treatment. Orthophosphate treatment, I'll be presenting to the Board as emergency. Basically, it's to coat the lines to prevent lead from reaching the water. It's used in Chicago, it's used in other places around schools. Fifty-five percent of the water facilities in the country use some form of phosphates in the water. It's a proven treatment, and it should mitigate the problem. We also, you'll be getting information from me in about a month, or six weeks. It's called a self-survey. We're going to send out the website, it'll be available on computer, websites for your phone. You'll be able to, you'll be able to call if you don't have a phone or a computer. You'll be able to take a survey. The water department is going to send out the information about your account to you. You type in your address and you'll be able to pop up your information. It'll say, Mr. Misses Jones, twenty-fourth Park Street. We're not sure exactly what we're on. But basically, we'll have information out of the home that we know. And we'll tell you if we think you have a lead service line or not. And we'll ask you questions like, is this information accurate? And they'll check off yes or no. Have you changed your line? Yes or no? So the opportunities to update information, we'll review it and we will update information. The goal of this, is to have an accurate inventory of the service lines in the village, which is a mandatory thing with new lead copper rule. We call it L C R R, which came out last year and posted on us throughout the country, not just part of the city. We have to have this inventory done by October of two thousand twenty-four. Technically, the village is complete with inventory now we can submit it. Because we had one of all home records and it is what it is. But we want to make it as accurate as possible. Because in subsequent years, two thousand twenty-three and forward, that inventory will be used to help us follow through on subsequent steps that will be imposed by EPA. So we want to give them the most detailed and accurate, and we want your help to do that. So we're working a lot of solutions. We also are calling for every grant in the federal, state, or county inventory. There's a grant for water out there. We're asking for it. We want them to give it to us or deny it. We don't want to, we don't want to self, eject ourselves in the process. Every grant's available, we're going for it. And we're also thinking constantly asking for help from our settlement and our center to see if the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation will help us get grants for residents using us as the inventory there. So we're aggressively going after it. But we are going, we're already in a new phase. You'll also be getting letters in your bills as they come out and in both these communications, we quarterly or annually, depending on the orthophosphate, the orthophosphate treatment. We're trying to get it in place before the pumping season ends, it's about October. So that we can pump the lines faster, with some more water pumped through the system, the test, the coating, the power. And that should mitigate the problem within five to six months, maybe seven months. Any questions that we have?
Thank you, Ralph, for that. Just in our hand, for folks who haven't heard any of the E V material or the village material on this, we have a information program on just the information on lead and lead service lines on the website, village website. The E V page that John Riley put together, which will give you a lot of information on, you know, the dangers of lead and lead service lines and what we can do about that. The E V's been working closely with H. Two N. and Mr. Swanson to try and help get this information out to the community. And we appreciate all residents sharing it as well. The importance of testing your water for lead and determining, try to determine if you have a lead service line.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we finish? Any comments? Do you need to report? Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I do actually like to make a statement. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to address an email many of you may have received from a member of the mayor's committee on St. Paul's, Francine Ryan, whom I have not had the pleasure to meet. That email was sent to all residents who, like myself, attend the town hall hosted by the mayor's committee on St. Paul's. Understandably, I was not included in the distribution list, though it was forwarded to me by friends. It appears Ms. Ryan misunderstood the intent of an agenda item that is not on tonight's agenda. And I'd like to provide everyone with whom this misunderstanding was shared some clarification. So number one, I absolutely do not disrespect the committee's thirty-eight members, but rather, I feel gratitude for every one of you for taking on this challenging and important task. I appreciate that each one of you, like myself, care deeply about our village and are contributing your time and energy to the village. Number two, I absolutely do not disrespect the village residents. On the contrary, I'm serving the village because of the deep respect I have for our community and all the residents who all were in the city home. Number three, I take very seriously the promises I made when I ran for trustee in two thousand twenty-one and again in two thousand twenty-two. One of those promises was that we would listen to residents on the future of the St. Paul's building. And that after so many years, we would bring the future of the St. Paul's building to a community vote. In speaking with residents, whether they were for restoration, saving the facade, or demolition, I heard agreement that we, as a community, must make a decision. And we cannot continue to delay determining the fate of the building. I knew this would be an extremely challenging task, but I am committed to do everything in my power to deliver on that promise. Your committee has been working hard to tackle one of the most challenging aspects of this task. I see the work that has gone into exploring possible uses and evaluating the condition of the building and what modifications can be made to match those uses. I support all your efforts and I thank you for them. I also recognize that it's the eight of us sitting up here who are responsible for collecting and analyzing this information and bringing this issue, which has divided our community for so many years, to a vote. And that brings me to the agenda item requested by trustee Kelly that under our Board of Trustees' rules and regulations should have been on tonight's agenda, but it is not. And this is what it read. Community vote on the St. Paul's building. Board authorization is requested for arrangements to be made to hold the community vote on the St. Paul's building on Saturday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, from nine a.m. to six p.m. at the St. Paul's Field House. The board's trustee shall finalize the two-question ballot and publicize it approximately twenty days before the vote. Any person or group, including but not limited to the mayor's, St. Paul's committee, and F D M. may submit their written suggestions and any supporting documentation relating to the ballot by five p.m. on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Absentee ballots shall be permitted consistent with the procedures used during the most recent village election. Why? Why was this requested for the agenda? For many months, the fall has been discussed as a target date for the vote. It's now the end of August. Everyone needs deadlines. To quote Bruce Torino, if not then, when? Which brings me to the next point, which is that trustee Kelly shared this weeks ago. And frankly, it was expected to be some response, maybe, hey, we need until October fifteenth for this reason or that reason. But there was never a response to tonight's meeting. I've yet to hear another proposed date. I think it would be irresponsible for us as a board to leave tonight's meeting without at least setting a deadline to receive information so we can set about going through that information and drafting a ballot, as well as compiling all the relevant information that needs to go out to residents. So they have everything needed to cast an educated vote on this important issue. So I just wanted to share that so you understand why it was that this was put in as an agenda item and it was not meant as any disrespect for your efforts.
Good morning.
I was on the Board of Trustees nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand one. And we worked extremely hard to find the use for St. Paul's, but did not. The building continues to remain dormant. I came back to being a trustee for a variety of reasons. First of which was a request by the mayor to serve on the fire safety committee. And the reason why I mention that is that it was a mayor's committee of which it had more than twenty-five individuals from the community. And as that process, similar to the process by the mayor's committee on St. Paul, continued, it was a barge was passed, both because of the schedules of the individuals, the issues that arose, as well as timing. Many times, commentary came to me and to others, when are you going to finish and deliver a report on the fire safety committee? The fall was approaching. The mayor had wanted to have the report out in September. It did not occur. Eventually became November, when it was presented at the Garden City High School. The difficulty with putting together a report with a lot of people is there are a tremendous number of moving parts. The board did not compel a date as to when the fire safety report was going to be presented. It then became the judgment of the committee as to when it was ready. And we tried to make sure that it was in the proper form and did due caution as to what was happening. I give you that background because the item on the agenda is as follows. The board, after discussion and due deliberation, shall establish a date where upon a community vote will occur concerning the St. Paul's building, which date is to give sufficient time to properly publicize the date on which voting is to occur and permit the residents to have sufficient time to properly review and vet the proposals being put forward. Said date and timing will be established by collaborating with the St. Paul's building committee members to ensure that the village is provided with the benefit and guidance of said committee and the input from all persons in favor or opposed to any use of the action to be taken. I know that word because it's mine. And the reason why I thought that version was on the agenda, and with all due deliberation and with all due respect to trustee Kelly, is that I wanted the committee to give the date. I am disinclined to impose a date on others. And therefore, it was my request that we here deliberate and that the board hear from the committee as to when a date is to be established. So my request is that the committee itself provide us with when they expect a date can be established and the board will then move forward on that. Like trustee Flanagan, I have the greatest respect for all of the individuals, both for and against whatever proposals are put forward. However, I believe that the process should go forward with the input of those that are on the first line and not us as the board second guessing when is to go on. Thank you.
I support trustee Flanagan's remarks. And I note that items are placed on the agenda for discussion and board consideration. Censoring proposed agenda items simply stifles discussion and destroys transparency because residents don't hear all the proposals. I believe that a calendar should be put on the community vote and that date should be set.
If I may, in all due respect, because I do respect Mr. Kelly and Mary Carter Flanagan, I totally concur with Bruce Torino. And I like everybody's saying, I really respect and appreciate all this time has been put in. And a couple of weeks or a month later, to me, after waiting thirty years, makes no difference. I'd rather that we have a plan that's fully baked, not half-baked. And the last lap of getting this accomplished is the most important lap. And that phrase comes from critical things that need to be decided, well-known in the business industry. So we got to get that last lap completed, everybody to the finish line, and then the town can properly vote on what the draft amendment is going to end up.
What we do now from this issue, from the residents, if you can come up with a speech about this issue right now, so I can hear this. Can we do that? Any residents who want to speak about that?
Speak. Good evening, Captain, it's me, Tom, about four. So I'm glad to have some clarification. I definitely agree that the last lap is the critical lap. I'm not on the committee, although I've been informed you all before because I'm trying to watch the committee and see what they are really doing. And I'm talking to as many people as I can at the pool, in coffee shops, in Coquette, wherever I might be, over at the historical society shop. And I think everyone in the village, I think, from what I'm hearing, is amazed and waiting with bated breath that we will have something from this committee. And I do think that the whole village is dying to know. And I understand Charlie's, Mr. Kelly's eagerness to say like, okay, let's just put a finite line on it. But I think the truth is, after all this time, it's just important to get all the information and then give people enough time, not just you guys enough time, to think how you need to word whatever it is that's going to be voted on, which hopefully should be pretty simple. But to give everybody in the village the time to look through it and say like, okay, so how does that actually affect me, my finances, every single person I talk to? For St. Paul's, against St. Paul's, don't care about St. Paul's, only care about how much? Don't, literally, so many people have said to me, I really don't care if it's here, done, I just want to know the cost. That's what people are focused on, obviously for good reason. They just want to know how is it going to impact them? How will it impact their property value? How will it impact their population value? So I just want to say, I appreciate that letting the committee come forward. And if I was sitting in your seats up there, I would be very happy to have the committee give us the thing and give us their deadline. Because you don't want people to turn around and say like, you know, we waited thirty years and then because we had a deadline of September thirtieth, which seems kind of fast to me, is putting a lot of pressure on you guys to take a lot of flak from the village that has patiently waited and impatiently waited, you know, depending on where you are. So I would ask that the committee chop-chop, we know, we got to do this, let's do it well. But let's do it well and let's actually get it finished and let people have the information and understand it. Thank you.
Just to expand on that.
Thank you for your comments. Also, just to point out, which I think we all realize, we can't even get to price until we know what the outcome of the studies are going to be. So we do need, I'm sure that the committee needs time to evaluate what the price is going to be for that. I know that's kind of forbidden, am I correct?
Just to expand on that.
I want to let the resident who just came up this week.
I can wait. Steve, just be patient.
Sorry, Steve.
Go ahead, finish, whatever it is.
Thank you. Just to expand on that trustee, that'll be all right. We actually received seven of our P's back from that comprehensive analysis report. Those responses only came back with three actual cost estimates. We received three of those estimates. Two out of the three estimates. So, we actually referenced out the two more firm, additional estimating firms, that do the restoration of fixing these kind of buildings. We referenced this team by the firm mayor. We actually did a walkthrough this morning with one company, and hopefully, we can get a clear, solid estimate on moving forward with that analysis. Very important and critical as far as doing that for either demolishing or the restoration of this facility. Thank you.
Frank Searns?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Steve Gray, member of FDEM. Good evening, all. First of all, I want to commend Trustee Kelly and Trustee Mary, and can't help it, Trustee Mary, for their exercise in what they see as their fiduciary responsibilities. Things don't get done unless you have a schedule. Now, how you input into writing in that schedule may require the input of...
Whoa, a number of people. I can speak without this, I don't really...
No, you have to bring someone.
I do?
Please, because they won't hear you.
All right. I can speak real loud. We can hear from my wife, can you?
All right. Anyway, the two trustees who presented this were both attorneys. I'm sure they're both used to deadline schedules, so it's only within their wheelhouse to suggest some kind of timetable. I was disappointed to hear that the committee has not made a suggestion about such a timetable. I really wanna know what a timetable is. That's a readable, because my group wants to respond to what the committee says about demolition. Lawyers, and there are three of you on the board of trustees, degrade because you are fiduciaries. We don't wanna make this a guess as to what we should say if there are areas of agreement between us and the committee about demolition. So, we'd like to hear what they have to say, and in the back and forth this morning, we were referred to certain dialogue, I put out that we like to know A, U, and C, and D, so we know, do we disagree? Do we agree? Let's narrow the issues. I know lawyers say that. They say it on TV. Let's narrow the issues. Let's not wait each other's time. So, that's what I have to say. FDEM wants a reasonable period of time to be able to respond to whatever the committee is gonna propose on demolition. The schedule can be what it is, but I think there has to be some kind of schedule. A friend of mine just said, "You know, there's such a thing as caution de mesure," maybe mispronouncing. That means in the event of some event, act of thought, something happens. Obviously, a schedule can be changed depending on things happen. Nothing has to be etched in stone. But I don't want a situation where it's September thirtieth and September twenty-ninth, my group and the committee are both sneaking over to hand our submissions over, because we don't know, we don't want the other side to know what we wanna say. I don't want that, and I don't think anybody should want it. That's what I have to say. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is George Stedlen. I'm also a member of FDEM. I just wanted to comment on something, Mr. Junior, I'll say. You can't make estimates of costs without knowing the usage that's been recommended by the St. Paul's committee. It's impossible. You're trying to analyze a coast. They don't have proposal system, what they wanna do with the building. How can anybody make an estimate based on not knowing what the usage is gonna be? Okay, that's not what I originally come to talk about, but I had to say that. The title of number ten on the consent calendar is called "Community Vote" on the St. Paul's building. I saw these two words, "community vote," and found the choice of words strange to me. All along during the last few years, the words referendum and binding were used by all in unchallenged words. Is the phrase "community vote" a shift away from a binding referendum? I think that is a crucial question. If the answer is yes, and it might be, why is the shift happening right now? Why wasn't it made months ago when the St. Paul's committee was formed? So, therefore, if it's correct that the vote will not be binding, then we only should expect an opinion vote, not a binding referendum. If it's not binding, how will you ever have a vote that will be binding at once and for all, and the thirty-year stalemate on inaction regarding the building? Finally, I find this pivot by the board of trustees a shocking development only three months prior to the planned November vote. Will we now face thirty more years of debate? Which it's shaping up to be like that. And even if the vote is not binding, I wonder if the trustees would commit to honoring the majority result of the vote. Thank you.
Under the law, there are certain words of law that define referendums and propositions. And those two words are only, only can be used with certain specified actions by a board. The law also says that a board of trustees is responsible for making decisions and cannot, cannot cede that authority to a binding vote on topics that are not specifically authorized in the law for a binding referendum or a binding proposition. So, I know a lot of people use the word referendum and maybe used it incorrectly, because again, under the law, a referendum is specific to certain actions that a board can take, such as dissolving the village, or changing the, changing certain functions of the mayor. Those, they're specifically laid out in the law, and again, there's plenty of law that says boards of trustees cannot cede their authority to make decisions to binding votes when those votes are not specifically authorized under the law.
My name is Bob Oros, and I'm twenty-eight-year-old. I'm also a member of the budget and finance subcommittee. One of my questions is, who is actually working on the reuse and the demolition of St. Paul's and the potential costs associated with each scenario from the course presented by independent professionals in their respective fields? Second question, I have, will the village be conducting an environmental impact study, which they did back in two thousand and three, and I believe in two thousand and nine, ten, which means that we haven't gone for one for about twelve years? This type of study can influence both reuse and especially the demolition. You can add to the course of each. And the fact of the matter is that EPA and environmental authorities expect certain things to be done while either reuse is being administered or demolition. So, I'd like to know whether this study is gonna be performed. Should be. Now, going back to the fact that I'm on the committee, we can't come up with a report. We don't have any information to come up with financial data. We can come up with hypothetical costs, but hypothetical is not what the village wants to see, nor is what we want to present. We want to present a true analysis from professionals who go in, study the building, and give us their insight as to what it can be used for, and what it's gonna cost, and/or demolition. There's not, not much more to ask, and the timeline you give us is a timeline which we can't do, we can't do, because we have no information. So, until we get that information, and we, the RFPs go out, and we expect it, people, professionals come in and give their analysis, and give their reports to the village, and give the reports to us and committee members and so on, we can't come up with them, just not possible. So, that's my comment.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be very quick. I know everybody here feels very strongly about this issue, and I know we were told at the beginning of this, this is a very large crowd attending here, and I think most people who are here are here because of the St. Paul's issue. The reality is, there are more people at the band concert tonight. And the reason there are more people at the band concert is, people don't know about this. I have spoken, I know people think that everybody in town is aware of this. I grew up in Garden City. I have spoken to people since I found out about this who have also grown up in Garden City. They live in Garden City their whole lives. They didn't know there was this plan. They didn't know there was this meeting. They didn't know about the other meetings. And I think it's not, I don't know if the message is getting out. Most of the village, I think now, are mostly young families, which I'm not anymore. And I think, I'm the median age here. I think I am, again. So, this is an decision that is gonna be binding on lots of other people who have more, like to say, skin in the game, really, than we now. And my aside on this is, my parents bought their house in nineteen forty-nine. My sister still lives in that house. We sent all the money, my parents sent all the kids to parochial schools. All of us went to parochial schools, and then parochial colleges. There was very little directly that my parents were getting out of the Garden City school system. My parents never objected to a school budget, because they realized the value of the house that they bought for sixteen thousand dollars in the middle of the estate section in nineteen forty-nine is now worth tremendously more than other houses bought by friends of theirs in other communities on Long Island. And that is because there are intangibles. Now, what are these intangibles? I think it's part of the intangibles, it's this village, the school, things surrounding the village, this community. Now, I don't know how much this is gonna cost. I don't. I don't know if it's a viable thing, because there are many things we want that aren't viable things, we're not gonna be able to afford them. I, I get that. But just rushing this now, when we've been waiting a long time, we saw the destruction of the Garden City Hotel with a hole in the ground for ten years. I remember the, what is it, St. Mary's? Growing up, that's gone. A lot of these beautiful things in this village that made this village, this village, we don't have anymore. And again, I'm not saying I know the solution. I'm not saying one solution is better than the other. I'm just saying, I'd like to know the facts, and I think whatever method there is to get this out about these meetings should be a little more inclusive and maybe in certain different ways. My sister said, "I didn't know there was a meeting about this." All these other friends of mine said, "Well, I don't know there was a meeting about this." So, maybe that's something that can be worked on, and I'm sure when you have all the information, you'll do the right thing. That's it.
Good question. Maybe you and your sister could come back with some suggestions that you can add to that.
My sister should be talking for days. You don't have to. You'll ruin it when we go.
I'm an independent. Couple things. Bruce, in your, in your number ten on the agenda, on the agenda list, you need sufficient time. What is, what in your, what in your head is sufficient time once the committee finishes?
I don't have an answer to that question, because sufficient time belongs to those that have to make the decision, and that is the committee. I do not wanna put a date. Let me give you an example. If you take batter and you put it into an oven at three hundred and fifty degrees for half an hour, you'll have a cake. If you take that same batter and you put it in the oven at seven hundred degrees for fifteen minutes, it'll be unpalatable. We have to have the correct amount of time that is necessary for the assembly, distribution, and vetting of the information. My father was a army colonel. He always said, "Listen to the citizens on the front line. They'll tell you the truth."
I'm not, I'm not pushing the committee to come up with...
So, you asked me, "What is sufficient time?" So, therefore, in my mind, sufficient time is when those that are on the committee who understand the urgency of this project are sufficiently astute and give the board their best-kept estimate.
Remember, my question was, when the board gets it, what is sufficient time for the citizens like us to tear it apart?
Now, I believe you say you're fully independent.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Yes, you are independent, but I believe that your response reveals more of your independence than you would want us to believe. So, the question really is, what do you think is sufficient time?
Minimum sixty days.
Okay.
That's not my answer.
What?
Minimum sixty days. I don't want twenty days. I'm sure everyone wants ten days.
You answered another question. Yes, I am attorney, and yes, I have deadlines, and yes, those deadlines get adjourned all the time. So, I appreciate the desire for an answer. However, after thirty years, I am not inclined to rush that answer so that we come out with an improper result.
I'm not answering privately for rushing. I'm asking the time at that committee makes that presentation. I'm not pushing the committee. The committee takes six months of our time, sir. But once we get to say it, I want...
Once, once the board has the information from the committee and you're ready to set a date, I am certain that thirty, sixty days would be a sufficient amount of time for you to review and anyone else to review, because there is both a publication period as well as a voting period. So, in most battles, you have B, A, D minus this, D minus this, and I think what we're gonna wind up having is a date, then dates going backward for the distribution of ballots, tabulation, getting them in.
Now, the team are going the same lines. Once they've made this presentation to the board, I read her statement...
So the question really is, what do you think is sufficient time?
Minimum of 60 days.
Okay.
That's not my answer.
What?
Minimum of 60 days. I want 20 days. I'm sure everyone wants 10 days.
Minimum of 60 days. Answer another question. Yes, I have attorney, and yes, I have deadlines, and yes, those deadlines get adjourned all the time. I appreciate the desire for an answer. However, after 30 years, I am not inclined to rush that answer so that we come out with an improper result.
I'm not answering property for rushing. I'm asking the time at the committee makes that presentation. I'm not pushing the committee. The committee takes six months of our time, sir. But once we get the data, I want...
Once the board has the information from the committee and you're ready to set a date, I am certain that 30, 60 days would be a sufficient amount of time for you to review and anyone else to review because there is both a publication period as well as a voting period. So in most battles, you have D, D minus this, D minus this, and I think what we're going to wind up having is a date, then dates going backward for the distribution of ballots, tabulation, getting them in.
Now, continuing along the same lines, once they've made this presentation to the board, I read in her statement, we're to sit down with a five-year cash flow, melding in the current capital needs budget and adding in the needs of the funding of St. Paul's and complete a five-year picture of what it's going to be. It's going to cost us...
Keep that overnight. Don't worry.
Not my next person to just say. You're not getting this right now supposedly on end cost estimates. What are they estimating based on? What did you give them to work with, make you do an estimate? When I'm looking at you, you didn't go to give an estimate on this. What did you came up with?
We came up with...
We made who?
Village engineers came up with an RFD to do an analysis of the building, was it the beneficial aspect of the demolition or the refurbish of this building? So we roughly gave a program. It is designated parkland, so the program for that would be some sort of recreational use. So they do have a schematic idea of what we can't use this building for.
But they have the tree, they have the whole building, the facade and that tree and the E.
That's correct.
But if you specify needs and look at the list of things that people want, you're just doing pure construction work.
Just pure construction work. The program is still not set for the actual use of the building.
My next question is, we got an astronomical figure. How do you know it's astronomical?
That's a very good question. Considering we only had three bids that actually came in the estimates...
You're only paying the astronomical. Maybe my opinion is not astronomical. Do you mind if I was that number?
I can't release that number. Is that okay to release that number, Mayor? Sure.
That's a fee proposal.
It's a fee proposal. It's not a cost estimate. It's a fee proposal for the RFD for this design, for this analysis. That number was 1 point, I'm sorry, $190,000.
For anything else, $190,000.
$190,000 for the analysis. So we referenced two other, sorry to have you over there. We counted two more firms to try to compare that number because the other three firms were not adequate firms for this analysis, which we thought...
I read that number budgetary anywhere. That's a comp of one of our reserve funds.
Correct. So we're awaiting two other numbers. Once we get those two numbers, these numbers will be coming in from our reputable firms that actually do construction cost estimating for historical buildings.
Just wanted to reach out to you. Recent, we just recently worked here and in the past year, but I've worked here for 23 years. So I want to reinforce a couple of things. My wife and I are here tonight only because we got an email from, I don't remember that person's name that you could reference. We didn't see anything official, you know, coming out about tonight's meeting. A lot of times we get wind of things in the Garden City News email. But to that other gentleman's point, I think, you know, a decided effort to increase our regular communication to residents, you know, might really be helpful for many issues and certainly for this issue because I know it's so contentious. As a new resident, I just want to offer my opinion. I know a lot of people here will disagree, but we live in a beautiful community. My wife and I just moved from another beautiful community in Sucker County, and we looked at a lot of different areas to live in. And we chose Garden City not because I work here, but because it's a beautiful community. And one of the reasons it's beautiful is the tree-lined streets, the certain rules that we have, no parking at night on tree-lined streets, beautiful architecture. We all travel to Europe. This is an affluent community. We all travel, and we don't go to places that look like places we don't live in. We gravitate to places that look like this, that look historic, that have beautiful architecture, beautiful buildings, beautiful planning, all the things that this village has. I think it's very short-sighted to strictly look so severely at the cost of demolishing the building or improving the building, which is what I'd like to see personally, not demolishing it. Because it undersells what value that building gives to the community. People want to move here. We have a very robust real estate market in this community. It's not because it looks like other communities. It's because it looks somewhat special. And when we tear a building that looks like St. Paul's down to the ground, we've lost some specials, and we've lost property value. I firmly believe that. I'm not here to quantify that because I'm not capable of quantifying that, but I know it to be true, just like I know that trees lining streets is a property value increase. Somebody might not like trees. They might say, prove it. I can't prove it, but I can prove it just generally that people want to live here and property values just continue to go up here. They go up at a higher rate than other communities. And that's because it has beautiful architecture, tree-lined streets, and a lot of really good things like St. Paul's. I want to see it stay. I would love to join the committee and help with the effort to do that, do whatever grunt work I can do to help count. And I think people need to stop looking at what it costs us because it's going to cost us more if we tear it down and just have a level playing field. We have enough level playing fields there already. What are we going to do? Have parking lots and level playing fields everywhere? No, you need beautiful buildings, you need trees, and you need to have a sense of community, and that will do that. And if we reuse that building and we make it something that is more vital for the community, it'll only increase everything good here.
Ryan Rooney, 147 years of age. I'm the chairman of the finance committee, the St. Paul's committee. In February, I ordered a couch. I still haven't gotten the couch. About the same time I joined the committee, just for a time perspective. We didn't discuss getting a couch for 30 years. Trustee Kelly, you cannot get into financial by September 30th. Not possible. And nobody in our committee will put our name on something that we cannot confirm and review and present in a manner that we feel confident. Trustee Flanagan, you said this has been floated out for weeks. I heard it on Tuesday on social media. That's why we didn't respond. We need a deadline. We need deadlines. No argument, no argument at all. Why don't we sit down in a room and discuss what these deadlines could be? I mean, we've hit snags along the way, delays along the way, like everybody else in every other line of business and line of work. Why don't we all just sit down and say, when can we get this done by? And then that goes to this, and when can we get that done by? And have a discussion instead of floating things out in emails and social media. In all honesty, these things for some type of political ploy. It's been very discouraging, and we spent the last week of this committee discussing senior deadlines and not St. Paul's, not uses, not purposes, not demolition, not cost, not legal ramifications. Personally, I've made myself available to any group in this village or any person in this village who has a question about the finances. I'll continue to do so. All I ask is that we work together and not try to work behind each other's back.
Mayor, I have a question. When will we have another meeting at Cluitt Hall as we had two months ago? Where we had presentations from representatives from each facet of the St. Paul's committee.
Do you believe this will be scheduled in September or October?
One in September, one in October.
Okay.
October and November.
October 12th and November 2nd.
At the high school.
Okay, so October 12th and November 2nd.
At the high school.
My name is Brian Devaney. I have the privilege with Bob Shelby to chair this committee in St. Paul's. Like Mr. McDonald, he's only middle-aged and don't you like to hear from a youngster? The one that has been involved in St. Paul's since we purchased it in 1992 and headed the first mayor's committee for the next two and a half years, trying to find a solution to this problem. Everything I heard tonight from all of the speakers is that there is no way that an artificial date can be set for this committee of 37 people with professional experience that devoted so much time, so much effort to doing the right thing. What you want at the end is a product that everybody knows, everybody has studied, everybody has had an opportunity to vet, re-vet, so that at the end, when you have a referendum, you're going to have people knowledgeable in the result and right in doing the right thing. Setting a time date is impossible for this committee. This committee's been working as five subcommittees, some of which have been working weekly in the last seven to eight months, trying to determine, trying to get the facts, trying to get the information and the documentation that you all need to review in order to proceed further with the referendum. Many of the committee members are here tonight for that particular reason. We want to do what's best for the village. We want to do what's best for you. Putting up for a vote, an unfinished product, not only is it not going to be signed off by any of the committee members, but it's not going to be the right thing to do. I remember the story of the Pope who walked into the Sistine Chapel and looked up at the ceiling, and there was Michelangelo on his back with his paintbrush. And the Pope said, when are you going to be finished? And Michelangelo dropped his paintbrush, looked down and said, he'll know when I finish because I'll finish. Had he provided by a specific people a date line, the Sistine Chapel would not be the masterpiece that it is today. But he took his time to the frustration of us and you and did a master project. That's what we intend to do for you. We have no problem with eventually setting a date, provided that it's a rational date and can be accomplished for the best of all. Thank you very much.
If you could return to the podium, trustee Marcean O'Leary.
You left early. Where's your question? You said getting a date is impossible. Can I ask you a question? What do you need to do and how much time do you need to come back to this board and tell us when the date is? I understand looking at lines, I like the reference, right? It's beautiful. I've been there and seen the ceiling, but we also, I think, having lived here as long as I have and seeing what's happened to St. Paul's over the last 30 years, okay, we do need to have an idea of when will the date be provided, right? Is that something you need six weeks to come back with a date? Is it you need four weeks? Is it you need eight weeks? What do you need in order to come back to this date?
I'm not prepared to give you a definitive date or even a general date in this particular...
I'm not asking for a date right this minute. I'm asking for what do you need? Can you come back to us with what you need, and then we can set up a separate session to talk through kind of when that date can be provided? Because then to, to Chuck Dugree's comments, once we have that idea of date, then the next lockstep things kind of happen in terms of type of review, in terms of when a vote can be set, right? Right now, we've got nothing. So my question is simply, what do you need? How much time do you need in order to get the information?
We can get that information two weeks.
In what sort of a time frame, sir?
Shortly, I would think.
Two weeks? Shortly is a very amorphous time.
Certainly is.
Mr. Devaney, we have another board meeting on September 15th. That assists you in giving this board an idea as to when we should have some expectation of filling your metabolism?
I think we might be able to do that. I guess so.
Very good. Okay. I can only give you the suggestion that if you walk onto an aircraft and you talk to the pilot and he says, and you ask him, do we have enough fuel to get to the next destination? And the pilot says, maybe. I don't like that plan. So yes, on the 15th, we will all be here, and whatever you can give us as soon as possible, that would be greatly appreciated.
We will do that.
Thank you.
And can we have that shake that you're making?
Just one moment. I think to be realistic, right, you set a target date that'll be helpful for us, right? But as one smart person told me, if I told my wife I'm going to be down in Riverhead in an hour and a half and I hit traffic or unforeseen things, an hour and a half could take three hours. So I think you call it, if you can, a target date, then we can start working off of it.
Okay. We're here to get the good party for you.
Oh, I know that. Thank you.
That's what we're going to do.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for taking...
Sorry for that comment. I'm Betsy Ann Reedus, one of the co-chairs of the communications committee. Michelle Harrington was working with another unsung hero, Karen Altman, who has been one of the hardest-working people at the committee, who has been trying to get dates. When we tried to have another town hall, we felt that Cluitt Hall only held 200, we had 254 people the night of that meeting. So we changed it to the Garden City High School because it can accommodate a lot more people, the sound system is better, and everybody can see what's going on. So there was a lot of back and forth because we also didn't want to interfere with your meetings. We too are trying to get this done. We, you know, some of us want our lives back. We spend 40, 60, 80 hours a week on this stuff, so we're trying our best. As I told trustee Flanagan yesterday, you've got people that are experts in the field of engineering and architecture and finance. They're dedicating a lot of their time, and a lot of them are still working. So we are trying our best, but we also live here, and we don't want to be, you know, priced out of the market and everything. We know we want to give something that the village can use or not use, and so everybody gets a fair shake. So we're trying our best and, you know, thank you.
John Campbell. What I think a few of you are figuring out, Mr. Marcean O'Leary, and Father Kelly and Mary, is that y'all are accountable for a referendum coming to pass, not the committee. The committee's kind of doing a lot of the legwork for you. But five of you have been in office for 16 months, so you've had time to get to the point of a referendum. We've been hearing fall for eight months. The fact that a date was picked in the fall to work back from, and you were still not getting a date, instead of when you proposed a date, instead of the committee coming to you with a date or the head of the committee, the mayor, coming back to you with a real date or a work back, you need some number of days before the referendum, and we need some number of days before that to tell the village. That's where they need to be. There needs to be, there's some accountability here. And I see that you're trying to hold the committee accountable, but ultimately you are accountable for it. Ultimately, y'all have to come up with a referendum, and if the committee hates you for it... And if the committee hates you for it, okay, but y'all have to do it. Thanks.
Hi. Tom, I have two points. One, I think this group is the most respectful group I've ever seen on a board of trustees towards the residents. I think that the communication group, who refer to you as rogues and disrespectful, the group that you guys funded, is very inappropriate. My understanding is, before that group prints anything, it has to go through some procedures, so I'm assuming it was put out by the communication group. I think for them to refer to you guys as disrespectful to the residents is very inappropriate. The second thing is really, Tom, you referred to the last lap. And the last lap is the most important. But what laps have you received from this committee? Have you gotten any side-by-side proposals, any timelines, any financial projections, any spreadsheet analysis? What have you gotten from this group that you're so comfortable you run on the first laps, and you're waiting for the last lap? What have you received?
I haven't received anything final yet.
Okay, have you received anything?
Just verbally.
Okay, so those are the first laps, and you're waiting on the last lap. It sounds like you haven't really got to the first lap yet. And I think that there are parts of this group...
No, 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 you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. I'm saying that, from what I'm hearing from the committee, they're in, let's say it's a four-quarter game, right, football? Or we play lacrosse, which you play. They're, from what I'm hearing, they're in the last lap, meaning that they're trying to come to a conclusion. And I'm okay with that. I think that's most important.
Maybe one of the reasons we're thirty years down the line is people have not kept these committees to deadlines. If part of this group cannot give you financial data by a certain point, date, I suggest you look for other sources of financial data, because there seems to be a holdup in this group. Somebody's referring, some gentleman's referring that they can't get numbers because he doesn't have the data. Somebody's referred, you funded forty, fifty thousand dollars for communication, nobody's heard about it but this group. I really think this board of trustees, as Mr. Campbell said, should take responsibility for this committee, because you are responsible. And first it was September, then October, then November. It's not going to happen this year. It's going to get kicked down the road like it is for the last thirty. And all eight of you ran on resolving this problem. You don't have a timeline. You never should have funded this committee until you had a timeline. It should have had a timeline from day one. You're eight months in, begging them for a timeline, and they're telling you they can't give you. Somebody in this group needs to get control, because it is floating nowhere. And I really think you guys have to take a little bit of responsibility for this.
Mr. McCloud, can I differ with what you're saying?
I assumed you were going to. And that's why I fled to my seat.
This committee has not been around for thirty years. So let us assume that while thirty years have gone by, and it is a somewhat intractable problem that people have been working to solve, I don't think that some of your commentary is as well-pleased as it should be. I believe that when you say the village funded the committee, I don't recall seeing any of that documentation. I do recall that there was a payment for a firm to put out information, but none of the members of the committee, as I understand, are being paid. They are all volunteers.
I think you realize I was not implying members were being paid, and I was referring to the advertisement program that you guys funded.
Since you are a wordsmith, I am just assuming that not being a near scrivener, you say what you intend.
You can interpret any way you want, because that's not what I intended.
Okay.
And I also know, you have not cited on that that part of thirty years. I was not accusing of being here thirty years. There's a pattern in this village, when it comes to St. Paul's, of kicking the can down the road. And this group ran on something that they were going to act differently and resolve the problem.
Yes.
You are eight months into a process, you have no timeline. They will not even give you a date when they're going to have a timeline.
So if you're saying that eight months on a thirty-year system or project is offensive, I disagree. I believe, from what I have heard, there are many individuals who have contributed substantial amount of time, and I am, at least for one, not looking to either castigate or impose upon them a timeline for them to complete the project.
I just happen to agree with Mary, and I happen to agree with Mr. Kelly.
By the way, groups have a heart. Anybody that manages, anybody that... Differences of opinion. You have yours, I have mine.
Anybody that manages a business, those timelines are important. Those deadlines are important. You are eight months into a process, you have no timeline, you have no deadlines. Correct? That's my question.
We, we did run on having a vote of referendum, excuse me, in November. And we greatly appreciate the work that this committee has done so far. It's made people of all different occupations, specialties, that put this together. But we ran on that. And the gentleman in the back, who I earlier mentioned that he felt he was the median age, and he's accurate. There are a lot of young families in this town that are, shall we say, somewhat concerned about this, and how we're going forward with it. So, again, appreciating what you've done. We do need to move this along.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
My name is Brian McDonald, lifelong resident of the village. And I put my honor on Don McCloud, because he grew up in the city, so my older brother. And as I said to Don a year ago, we're in the shoulder-to-shoulder, and I continue to believe that. The issue tonight really is not a deadline. The issue, the sub-rose issue that's got this room packed, to be direct, was that unbeknownst to the whole village, a deadline was being brought to this committee that would foreclose any discussion after September thirtieth, potentially. That kind of a decision after thirty years is really inappropriate and doesn't speak well to the assembly group. That's why people are here. Everyone agrees, we'd like to come to a conclusion. I've been at this for thirty years, since I moved here. December ninety-two, when I moved back into town. The first person beside my wife who wants to be out of this is me. So what is our timeline? We made a decision when you and the Fab G C group was elected, and we all were very supportive, to try and come to a conclusion. Yet it took this board, this administration, ten months before you ever formed a committee, until January of this year. Then in January, after a month of deliberations in forming the committee, it took two months before we could even get the engineers in the building to confirm whether or not we were going to waste any time, or whether the building was falling down, as was advertised by people in this village. And then we found out, it's really only three to five percent of the building is as a problem. And that three to five percent would not be in the way of any kind of a restoration if that was a choice. Too much delay. By April, we finally got our team committed, and we began to look at a host of different issues. In January, trustee Kelly and I sat and went through a number of legal issues that were relevant to the process. Well, we only finished issue one last Tuesday. Last Tuesday, we got a commitment from the legal committee as to what we committed and not permitted. Yet here we are, eight months later, and the legal committee has had all of those other issues which they could be looking at. And the use, and programmatic use and cost analytic committee, which I chair, has been working on each of these issues since at least March and April. Let me address each of them. From the very first committee meeting, where we knew there were a group who we respect and have been friends and neighbors for my entire period here, we invited the demolition group in and asked for their input on demolition. I can give you the history that was recited in the Garden City News. They have not been forthcoming. We, in March and April, began our own review of demolition. Three comments. Breckenbauer, historic, and facade. To try and get the actual cost of what each of those options would be, we are still in that process. Why? Because the demolition experts that we're talking to need time to figure out in their costs, and several are not going to bid unless we pay them. So that is a budget issue. Number two, in terms of the use. I want to make it absolutely clear that when we presented in June, it was not a proposal for the use of the building. What we said was, and what our committee decided early on, was that we wanted every voice heard. Pro demo, anti-demo, athletics, whatever, we wanted them heard. We didn't want anyone after thirty years to say, "God, you forgot about me." So we ran open meetings, and we said in June, all through the summer, and we had a number of people who've come in and told us what their thoughts were. No one on the committee, and no one in the town hall meeting ever said that the projections and the description of the use of the facility was a plan. Never was. It was merely what, if we took all the historical data and tried to jam it into the building, what that would look like. No one suggested we were supporting that, and we are not coming up with a plan. We are still just finishing a listening phase. But we have a pretty good idea of what will be done now because of our agreement with the legal committee. And then we'll focus on four areas. It will focus on a community center and something for seniors. It will focus on something in terms of performing arts and practice space. It will focus on athletics, and it will focus on enrichment, particularly in the sciences, but not a school and a school program. We're going to try and work on that. Simultaneously, and from as far back as February, and particularly since trustee Kelly raised it in an open meeting, and we promised him we would, we have been looking at the issue of a facade, and whether or not a facade plus a new building behind would be worthwhile. We were in the process of asking for other comments. We've had discussions with some people who've given us ideas, and some who have not. But we're going to proceed on a facade structure and come up with the actual cost on a forensic basis of what that structure would be. Why? Because there are very good ideas in that concept. Our committee has no preference for that, but we'll give that. So sometime in this fall, and depending on when we can finish up the architectural plans, we expect to be able to say to you, here are the legally permitted uses. There are no unpermitted uses, and this will be allowed to be in the building. And we're either going to do it on a facade basis, or the existing building basis. And I even hear there is a rumor that the F D E N group would like to see what a new building would cost. And we promised them that if we had their proposal, we would give a good, fair estimate to that. Our committee is not promoting any particular use or demolition. Our committee is certainly guaranteeing two things. Every voice will be heard, historically and currently. Let me just raise, for example, that this board, however, was very limited in its communications budget, which we've had to script and move around to try and make sure everyone is heard. It was a little anomalous to us if you would look at the amount of money so that the people would know what's going on, and something this important. Regardless, we're proceeding. Hopefully, there will be no other requests. We don't anticipate any requests for any additional communications budget, because this is something which people will be listening to. Finally, whatever we propose will be phased and affordable. Everyone has a dream. Whether it's the community park, Sistine Chapel, something like that. But even those are phased over time. We will present options for the village trustees to look at, because it is your decision. That will allow you to say, this is affordable, this helps our village, or not. Whether that's demolition, partial or facade, or total, or a new building, as the new one happens to be. But those are the processes that are going to happen between now and later on this fall. And we are looking forward to presenting in October, and we're looking forward to presenting in November. Don't forget, we also asked at one time if you would fund a survey as to what the residents would like. That would be helpful, if you begin your programmatic and planning use. But regardless, we will go ahead and come up with three different costs on demolition. Breckenbauer, facade, historical. We will come up with an option or two for the use for your consideration as we listen to the community, and we will hope to have all that done this fall. Thank you very much, and it will all be afforded. Thank you.
A little more comments? Stay on the agenda items? Sorry about that. While we're on agenda items, I want to go back to item number eight on the agenda, the proposed conceptual site plan H, modified plan A. I would like to make a motion to set up a resolution to defer the village attorney, a date for a public hearing on the re-greening of that conceptual site plan H for Main Avenue, where it would be discontinuing portion of Houston Road during that time. So again, that would be September fifteenth. Will be a public hearing regarding that.
It'll be just part of the board of trustees meeting, the public hearing.
Exactly right, yeah. That's, that's true. Yeah, that'll be part of the agenda of what'll be a very busy September fifteenth meeting. Also, if I could treasure a room in the community benefits hall. I was at the village officials meeting, the monthly meeting that the railroad does. And again, the subject of community benefits was brought up and confirmed from Anthony Tifano, who I believe you spoke to, and the administrator Swazi spoke to. And he said we should put in for, I mean, we may not have an exact amount, certainly for the main entity project, but we certainly should have that by September fifteenth. But in the meantime, we can put in for community benefit.
Let's move to our schedules. How much time does the village need to prepare the works for this project?
So on the, on the agenda tonight is this Plan H, modified A. That's a schematic plan, just so we all know, and we all understand what that is. The other pair specs, throw up the plans for the contractors to do step work. And to come up right now on that plan is an estimate. We validate that estimate to make sure that's clear. But in order to do this, the engineer possibly needs about five to six weeks to get this done.
Okay, well, I, I think if we could do that by September fifteenth, and that's what we're authorizing you to do, so that when we have the public hearing, we can discuss the numbers coming forward with that. I'm surprised at the time, but again, that's what we like. As far as my motion to have a public hearing, do we have to do a vote on that?
I'll second the motion to set a public hearing September fifteenth on the issue of discontinuing use of a portion of Houston Road north of Main Avenue.
Okay, we have a vote?
Make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion, and second by Mary.
I... So September fifteenth will be a public hearing regarding conceptual site plan H, modified plan A, and would you, if you would, support it?
That's correct.
I think the need for the public hearing is actually to discontinue use of that portion north of Maryland. So that's the need, that's why we're having a public hearing.
Discontinue the block?
Yes, it does not, that small portion between the island.
Right, it's, it's the end of the hearing group.
Just so that the record is clear, the resolution that we just made is in addition to item eight.
Is it in addition to?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Well, any more comments on the agenda items?
Yes.
Audience, in the audience, please. Agenda items.
Kathleen Norrell, former Carolina. Kathleen Norrell, former Carolina Avenue pertaining to number eight. I had great difficulty locating this schematic, to use the proper term, of this map, whatever you want to call it, about the roadway. And I'm not, I am technologically challenged, I will admit to it. But I called Karen Aldman, and thank you Karen, again, who said, "Look in tonight's agenda in the binder." And I went through the binder, and I found that map on page forty-eight. Now, I think that when you presented, you passed the motion today, and when we are going to discuss it next week, that either that map is published or it's put up there.
You want it up there now?
I don't need it, because I looked at it. I don't know how many other people could figure out how to do it. I had asked Karen. And while I'm asking questions, looking at that map, what does the word hatch area mean? There are two hatch areas.
I can answer that.
Good.
The hatch area is no parking, basically for the drop-off, that means take-norms, the drop-off area.
Thank you. Sounds like a question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul Rochenbella, two sixteen Kensington Road, Garden City. I want to reinforce what trustee Chester said about the community fund. I was also approached by Anthony Tifano saying, "Paul, I don't need guys to buy the money. It's one point six million that's available. Ask for it, and do it." The only thing I want to talk about a little bit is the concept of up there for plan. I think it was worked out great last time we showed it. But right now, we're talking about just the engineering work required to change the streets. There's another phase to that, and that was the phone call I got that they corrupted before. That was to say to you, Paul, you have to worry about landscaping also. And money has to be in there as well for the landscaping, so it'll be all part of the same project. In addition, we see some things going on in the village that really are not acceptable. Like Greenridge Road now, they told us by August fifteenth, they would be out of there when they built the sound wall. My understanding now is 3TC says maybe four weeks, maybe six weeks. Maybe we'll clean up the tons of bales that's on property that's not theirs. And it just, it distrays, and I feel sorry for the poor lady that lives right next to it. It's terrible.
We have some visceral, I've been speaking to the railroad about that, and using some of the community benefit funds to make sure we can landscape that area a lot better once they pull out.
But I'm more aware of it than I am, but the land is not even theirs. There's squatting on it, maybe a chase law.
I'm either speaking to you or this speaks to me. So I speak to Anthony Tifano almost every day. And he's right, we've got to get, we have to use the funds that are available to us. It's not only the benefit of the project, Maryland Avenue, but enhanced landscaping. We have some other projects in the village as well. That's a part of what the walls are going to be constructed. Also, money is awarded for that work from the community benefit fund. And also now, radar is the country life testing. It's another project that's looming, and we want to make sure we can address that as well.
My understanding of the community funds is related to third track projects.
Right.
We've gone to different viewpoints before, then I'm not sure about the breakfast of that. But it's supposed to be related to the.
Let me explain. Anthony Tifano said to me, "If the village can spend nine hundred thousand dollars from the community benefit fund for paving the Nassau Boulevard, they can give us money to do those walls." That was his comment to me.
I think the community benefit fund, as Paul Rochenbella said, is for residences, residents that have been affected by the third track project. Which, and so, which, right, well, yeah, but not to the extent that the Northern Estates has and the residents in that area. So Nassau Boulevard is not been affected by the third track project. And that was part of the reason of our frustration that nine hundred thousand dollars was spent on the Brixton Nassau Boulevard, a station that's hardly ever used. So I think whatever available resources we have in the community benefit fund should be used to benefit the residents in the area affected by the third track project.
If I just join in, I would not support the use of any of those funds in other areas. That was a huge issue in the campaign, and there was a lot of criticism of the prior board for doing exactly that. So just so it's clear, I would not support using that fund in any area that's not affected. I think Stu Manner got into train station, he works on Nassau Boulevard. That is not something I would support.
And do any of the trustees have any comments on that going forward?
Well, I certainly think that the community benefit fund money was intended and should be used to remedy the posted problems that were created for those of us who live near the Maryland Avenue Station. And until those problems are remedied, I don't think that there should be the funds spent for anything other than remedying those problems along Main Avenue and at the end of Kensington and Brixton Road. And we should employ all options to try to make the area once again attractive, including consideration of brick crosswalks from the train to the other side. Special lighting, something that might help to draw the eye away from the monster poles. We're going to need better lighting as the days get darker and the brick crosswalks, I believe, would aid in the focusing on the pedestrians who, having done that thousands of times, I know that we need all the help we can get in being seen by the cars who are picking up and taking people home.
People act about third track priority. We will satisfy.
Certainly, Greenridge Avenue is an area that has been impacted, and we certainly should help them as much as we can. Those are the areas that need.
I would like to, again, refer to the landscaping has to be part of the project. And I was a little concerned about the timing. I hope that everything comes together. Giuseppe, I hear how long, but I know your work's lengthy, and a lot of other projects, this is not your only project. So I appreciate the timeline. And I have to say thank you to you and John Barone, you did an excellent job. I think we did show the picture up there, we added some additional parking spaces. We've added some handicap spots that weren't there before. And landscaping should help with the lighting, and it should help with the sound. So I think overall, it's really a worthwhile project. Funding from the railroad to do it and get moving. Thank you.
The landscaping will definitely be part of it.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for all your expert work on this. We really appreciate it.
I'd say mine, and first of all, I want to say thank you to trustee Flanagan for the apology. But I also want to say thank you to everybody. Well, excuse me, an explanation, I stand corrected. Thank you.
You have to go on the other way.
Stand corrected, explanation. But I also want to say thank you to everybody in this room who came as a result of the information that we shared about what was happening in terms of the process that people that are on the St. Paul's committee, the mayor's committee on St. Paul's, are following to try and make sure that we get as much information as possible out to people. And I apologize for being so late in the evening. I should have done this earlier, but a lot of other people are talking. I have a bunch of letters. I'm only going to read one of them, because people couldn't be here tonight. But I think it reflects very much the tenor of how people feel. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read one letter, and I'll turn the other ones over to Karen, and she will distribute them to you. This is from Rachel Cashwell, who lives at one twenty-nine Stratford Avenue. Dear Board Trustees, I am writing to request the date of the referendum on St. Paul's be set with prudence and respect for the diligent work of the many volunteer citizens who have thoughtfully engaged in compiling information regarding options for St. Paul's. After all these years, why would the board encourage a rush to judgment when months of information regarding costs for adaptive use or partial or complete demolition are currently being compiled? I believe you owe the citizens of Garden City a reasonable amount of time to absorb all the information their fellow citizens have gathered before asking them to make a decision on the favor of St. Paul's. To do otherwise is disrespectful and arrogant, if not unethical and devious. Now, again, this is from someone who is here in the village, just an ordinary citizen. We're all ordinary citizens trying to do the best thing. So I appreciate the fact that you're, you know, hearing us tonight. I appreciate the fact that all these people showed up, or many of them showed up, to support the process. We didn't ask them to come because they wanted demolition, or they wanted to save the building. We only asked them to come to support the process, and that's why they're here. So thank you very much to all of you.
I request that this item be preferred until after the community vote. There is easily an implication by voting for a new poll to St. Paul's now that this award is saying we favor renovation restoration. The vote, rather, the vote on this agenda item for St. Paul's should be preferred until after the village vote. Thank you. And it's disgraceful to any member of the committee to commemorate any of these board of trustees, and you people owe them an apology.
The flagpole for St. Paul's is very visible, signed. And we had a lot of comments when the flag is flying. It's a flag for a major park in the city, the village. And I don't go over specifics, gentlemen, on the street, actually, preparing a flagpole. It denotes anything more than its role.
Yeah, sorry, on number eight, something kind of technical and boring. At the, the current drawing has at the end of Meat Brook and Roxbury, six parking spots. Before we take that to a vote, I really think that should be green. All the other parking spots that you've added are hidden by an island. Those six are additive. We don't, they are extra compared to pre-project. I'd rather that be green space. And the people on those blocks that Paul and several people went to petitions went with that being green space. So as of this moment, that's what residents thinks is going in.
So you're saying this has to be revisioned in the plan?
I mean, that's what I'm proposing. And compared to what residents saw whenever they were signing petitions, that area at the end of Meat Brook and Roxbury was green space, not six parking spots.
Do you mind, just making sure, because I didn't realize they were increasing parking with this plan. Do you mind, just so there's no confusion, the plans are going to be drawn up, pointing at those spots? And you understand the point there, Giuseppe, why are we putting more parking there when we're trying to green it for you?
And Paul, do you want to comment on that at the drawing?
If you look at the drawings, the first problem, if we try and match the existing spots, it's a yes. Commissioner Jackson will be able to help you. I mean, you probably look at the signs, it says no parking this way, parking that way. And there's actually no way to tell. On Houston Road is the only spot right now that are clearly marked. There's three spots at the end of Houston Road that say where you're going. So what Paul did, John Barone did, is he took and played out the existing layout of spots. And from the ideas that were given at the village meetings, yes, there was green at the end of Wellington, we just added that. There was green at the end of Roxbury. And John and Chris Barron both insist that we build something at Meat Brook. That's not happening. It's green at the end of Meat Brook. The extra spots there, I don't believe are extra spots. They appear to be the same spots that were before. It doesn't reach Meat Brook. It's a half block short of Meat Brook.
That's correct.
So I don't have the answer. I tried to explain it before the meeting we got here, but this is it.
Which is the spot?
What's, what's put on here right now, I obviously, at the end of Houston, we covered the road, right? And the meeting that was about the end of Jagged Walk River. At the end of Roxbury, they kicked out green rather than having parking. And again, that was from the village here. We did the same thing. John was able to change the green up here from seventeen feet wide, turn it down to eleven feet wide, and we put additional green at the end of Wellington. What you don't see is Meat Brook, which is over here. So the parking has stopped one house in at Meat Brook. Meat Brook is now going to have veiling cypresses, noise cruisers, blocking the same, as you're going to have green at the end of each block. It's the exact same design. I originally proposed this as six additional spots if we needed them. I don't know what the village requirements for parking are. I mean, there's pluses, this is not a final drawing by any means. You have a handicap ramp that comes down here. Maybe our handicap ramps should be, the parking spots should be near where the handicap ramp is. Maybe that changes this.
The handicap ramp, excuse me, Paul, the handicap ramp is by the crosswalk. So at the crosswalk, there'll be the handicap ramp.
Well, the ramp ends back here.
The checkered veil is not a part.
One ramp. It's, and I'm not even sure, at this turn, I believe there's a fire hydrant there, so we might lose a spot there as well. But this greening that we want to put in front, that's twelve or fifteen feet of additional greening above and beyond what 3TC has done, and it's going continuous. We block it from Nassau Boulevard to Wellington, and then Wellington down. Even this island that you see, this has been moved. It's lowered. We made it narrower, rose any of the sides. It'd be green additional in front of the tracks. And that's the whole purpose of this, to block the green, to make it more green, make it more visually appearing, block the lights, and also block the sound. I know the engineers say that sound is not block light. I'm an engineer, but I also lived on Kensington, and I believe that trees help with that. I don't think this is a file drawing, and the residents and John, they're here. I told Chris I'll take a walk with him. He cannot see those spots with his eyes.
Constance has to go further. I'll do it every once. For those areas.
That's correct. Also reviewed by the chief, as we're discussing it further. This is just a conceptual drawing at this point.
So, Catherine has, first, the village code. Commissioner Jackson has to weigh in on this.
That's correct.
Chief Pern has to weigh in on this. We need John Barone to look at this carefully, put all the details together, and that's why I think it takes six months.
Well, Chief Pern has weighed in on it, and as Police Commissioner Jackson has also weighed in. If both of you wouldn't mind making some comments, I'd appreciate it. We'd appreciate it.
Sure. So in regards to the fire department, after the June meeting, the next day, we took our largest truck, the fleet, and came up from Nassau Boulevard to Houston Road. There are no impediments over there. Our concern that was just raised by something that was brought up during the presentation was the narrowing of the road on the north side to eleven feet. That's going to limit apparates getting through, so we're just going to have to take a review on that section. But a review of the cross, excuse me, the island itself at Houston, there's no fireman concerns with the fire department about the island.
Pat, again, was, right now, was what, the detonator now?
At Wellington, where the roads become narrow, I believe it was eleven feet, was it mentioned? Thirteen and a half feet. Oh, okay, I heard that. That's what's scary, it was eleven feet. Thirteen and a half, we can work with. 13 and a half, we could work with.
Okay, all right, good. So what is the, what is the heat at Houston Road, do you recall? Is that 13 and a half?
Sorry. The road is significantly wider at Houston. Our biggest apparatus has multiple feet on either side. So there's no concern at Houston, especially with the island right there. It's just wherever we get to that bottleneck up on Wellington, what I just heard, 11 or 13 feet, that's just what I can say.
So it's 13 and a half feet, exactly?
Well, they're not, yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to continue to mention that this is still schematic. We just got word that there is a lot of utilities in the upper area on the north side, so it has to be studied further as far as any landscape they put in the area. Even though we're expanding the landscape in the area by at least 14 feet to the curve, we still have to, we still have to survey the area, because there's a lot of conduits as far as the electrical in that surrounding area.
Giuseppe, the plan that's up there, this concept, isn't, isn't just a net increase in one space? Or is it more than one space area?
Currently, the one that's up there right now is a net increase of seven spaces. It's a plus seven on the bottom. The question that was raised earlier as far as the hatched area, the hatched area and the parking spaces on the, let's say, east side of that map, if we continue that hatching area and, and say no parking required, we'll have a net one.
But I was, I was, I was thinking that one based on the commission recommendation to have drop-offs on those six spaces. So it's really a net, not a one space.
Right.
Giuseppe, is the handicap parking in a very convenient area for those with mobility issues?
Absolutely. It's right adjacent to the crosswalks, as per the plan.
Because you moved it, right?
We moved it also. We also added one more handicap spot.
How many do we have now?
We have, we have currently, we have two spots. There was none to begin with, yes. There was none to start with. That's why we're asking for the time.
Giuseppe, before this project, I was just kind of asked, Commissioner Jackson, to... Is that all?
And then you can, as long as you want.
Sorry. Before this project, that was a forest. There was no train station to any of the residents there. So like, whatever we can do, that 15 feet, what you're worried about, you know, if you don't have that space, you know, with the utilities and things like that, if we end up getting that for parking and for only 28 spaces, there's a brand new parking lot at Nassau Boulevard that has zero cars in it, zero cars every day. Please don't, please don't like, let these residents continue to have the light and cars parked. Please, just turn it back into a forest to any extent possible.
That's what we're trying to do, John. Commissioner?
Thank you, sir. You know, I've had to look at it several times with different reasons. My biggest thing is the flow of traffic and the safe passage of pedestrians. And the one thing I always say at this station was, it's a used drop-off station and a pickup station. So my biggest concern would be double parking, especially in the first set of parking places when they're back up, you won't build a backup that double parks. So my concern was, the hatch area, I wasn't sure if that was going to be a parking area, but sometimes that's almost like a fire zone when it's hatched, or a safety zone. But I was hoping for maybe a couple more spots in that area, only because it is, if you go there every rush hour, it is busy. And I'd like to eliminate the possibility, or lack the hood of double parking, because that could cause some issues. So, you know, my biggest thing is the free flow of traffic. I believe the plan for going to emergency is fine. The only thing I'm worried about is the double parking, and I think if they add two more spots there, take away two more spots and make that a no parking, it will help the situation alleviate or lower the risk of double parking.
Yeah, hi. Bill Daley with 96 Roxbury. Good to see you again. Thank you very much for your consideration on these matters and the good work that Paul has put into it. We look forward to meeting on the 13th. One related item which came up during our last discussion a month ago was the lighting that emanates from the one side of the platform. I mean, at the time, Thomas made that once they removed the temporary platform, which they did on the 29th, that would go down. That, you know, if anyone's driven by, that's not the case. It still continues to be a very, very strong overflow of lighting and kind of, you know, lights up the area. Picture recently, it compares to the one that was taken before the temporary platform was taken down. So just on the end of any discussions that continue with the railroad with regard to how they may adjust that?
I've had discussions with Mr. Tafano. We talked about lighting for the platform, horizontally, linear LEDs, and we've turned up the bathroom design, this is what we're investigating, but enough. Investigating a bathroom design to add to the light issues so the light will not...
Shining it down, shining it down towards the platform as opposed to out towards the street.
Exactly. We're hoping to get an answer within a week or so.
Okay, thanks for looking at it.
In addition to the mayor, I also talked to Mr. Tafano, and he's mentioned putting dimmers on the lights, which I find kind of interesting, considering the lights are on 24/7 all the time. And, but that's what he said he was going to hold in too. Even, even opposed to the shields, which, you know, this would be more money, so we'll see what happens.
It is kind of interesting to look during the daytime, is that the lights on the south side of the platform, like every fourth light is on on the other side. On the north side, they're on all whites, on all the time. All right. Thank you again.
Any other comments? Just Vesselotti?
Yes, Robert Vesselotti, 32 bricks. Again, I thank you all for this plan as well. I know Paul's worked hard on it, Bill and others. But I, you know, grew up in this area, I know this area very, very well. And I wanted, like, everyone to think about is, I really think the plan should extend to Meadbrook so we can really see it. For example, the crosswalk for Meadbrook platform is missing. The crosswalk for Roxbury is missing as you go off the south, you know, platform. I also think we should include a sidewalk along that north side. I know we want to do landscaping, but along that north side, people get off and they come down the platform and sends it right into the street, which I think is wrong, because I think we need to extend the sidewalk. I think we need to be really conscious of the, a large amount of passengers when they come off the train. Maybe it's a little light now because of COVID, but, you know, when it picks up again, it all comes at once, right? The other thing that happens here that's unique is if a train comes in on the north platform, you know, heading east, everyone gets off on the north side. It's happened to me many times, happens to my daughter all the time. It's happening now a lot. They all come underneath the trestle, and they converge at that very sharp intersection there where that turn is, and everyone just floods up there from the north side coming to the south side. You really need to see it when it happens, actually. And, and what happens is people just start fanning out, crossing the streets everywhere they want to go. So what I'm suggesting is that as we create a sidewalk along that area, all the way down to that point, I guess, of Boulevard there, that we also consider some guidance of fencing. So, you know, like, you know, like the black fence we have at St. Paul's, something like that, low, where you're forced to go to the crosswalk, right? And not just fan out all over the place in pitch dark and cars coming out every which way. It's really crazy, especially when the train comes in on the north side. And now they can do anything they want with three tracks. So that's really some of my concerns. I also think that the crosswalks, we might want to take advantage of that study where they talked about speed tables, right? It's, it's kind of a sloping and gradual, and then the crosswalk's there. It's in that drawing from Craig Manning. Could be a really good application here, doing a speed table for the sidewalk crossing. That's your question. And again, you know, I agree, you know, landscaping is critical. But one other point I want to make is, and it's hard to see on this drawing, but if you, because it's not highlighted, but on the south part of the roadway, there are some buffers that exist between Wellington and Nassau, really south, those buffers. And, and they, they bulge out quite a bit, and, I guess I could point to them myself over here. These, these buffers up here, there's one here and like along here. Some of those buffers could be planted better, I think. And also, I think they could be used perhaps as a mailbox drop-off. So there was some talk about moving the mailbox. But if, if, if you look at Wellington to Houston, there's a huge bump out there, and maybe you just do a little, you know, indent for the mailbox or something like that.
Unfortunately, that resident, a volunteer, was the last people I had, she couldn't help us.
Right.
So I'm sure we have to really look at it.
Right, okay. Well, thank you very much.
You actually bring up a good point, and Kathy Orogon support on this. Between Houston Road and Nassau Boulevard, that's where all the people congregated to get picked up. Because I lived across the street of the Lord of Houston and Earl, so it becomes a real traffic jam. It could become dangerous with the new setup. So I think we should look at some sort of safety where people coming from the other side of the tracks to, you know, the north side to the south side. I think that's a good point.
Any other comments? On Zoom?
We have somebody on Zoom. Mr. Lardy, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'm, uh, sure, I have something for the, the flagpole that was mentioned for St. Paul's. Is there a flag over by the comfort station near the playground? Because perhaps this new flagpole could be installed there. If we do any kind of major construction at St. Paul's or demolition, if it's demolition, the flagpole would be standing in the middle of nowhere in front of the building. I'm all for having a flag displayed, I know there was a good discussion on the flag. I think it may have emanated from my residents at one time. But maybe the flagpole could be installed by the playground and fields, and then if St. Paul's gets some kind of renovation, you know, a flagpole could be installed there. And I don't know what, how a flagpole's going to stay up here with the way we're going to do the demolition or construction. The other item is 21, which is the library HVAC that you were rejecting the bid. What is the timeline now to get that back out and get some bids in? And does this impact any of the children's room renovation that's supposed to start at some unknown time?
Mr. Lardy, it should be re-bid next week. We expect one of two outcomes, that we will, we're going to make sure that we contact additional HVAC firms that should be bidding on this, to see if they will bid, and we hope to get competitive pricing. And if the result is that the price is in the same neighborhood that we're rejecting the seating, then we'll come back to the board and ask for additional revenue to get this done. It does not affect the children's renovation, because the children's renovation, the HVAC was enhanced in the area where they are constructing the circular room up front in northwest corner, and in the room they've identified as the system area in the existing southwest corner. And by putting walls there and closing it off, it really blocks it from the existing air conditioning flow, so we're putting split units in those two places so they'll have their own, taking set their own comfort levels in those two spaces. So it's, it's in addition to the air conditioning that affects West Village.
And the last item of the nine, going into the village website. I recall hearing that there was a firm that designed the website for one of the communities up in Rochester. So is engaging this Susan, Susan Samuel, she's part of that firm, or is this some kind of different task that's being involved with the village website design?
No, I'll, let me respond to that. No, we, Mr. Lardy, we've engaged, the company we're dealing with, the provider of the websites named Civic Plus. So, if my memory is right, they've got 3,000 different municipalities that they need to work, okay? They've been working with this, this annuals, okay, to help us within the village, to help provide the necessary material and do some design work around what it is. Because if you think of it, if you look at what the Civic Plus platform provides, it's a framework of a series of frames that lets you build a website, okay? It's up to us to actually go through and actually make sure that a website has valid information, that it's designed in a way that's useful, that's friendly for us, and actually puts forward the best image in the village on the web. So that's the, that's the role that we brought her in for. She has experience in this space, which is quite good, and I'm going to be working very closely with her on the process. Any questions?
How was that, was that open to anyone to apply for? Or how, how was it that she was engaged? Was that open to anybody else? Was it posted anywhere?
It was, it was not done that way, Mr. Lardy. She's been volunteering on this process for a good amount of time, and the village doesn't have the expertise to take it through these final stages. So we asked her for a proposal, because we think that based on all these options put in and her experience in this area, that she's a person that's will be able to finish this off in a way that's respectful to what the village is looking for.
Okay. I'm not sure, I haven't done the math, but $50 an hour, not to exceed her, if I have some hours, we are hours here.
It's a not-to-exceed amount. And the, the, when I, when I put budgets together for things like this, I estimate a full 40-hour week at a certain rate, and we figure this will take us to January, first week in January, it's possible that we will not be using all funding, but stay if we need it.
Thank you. Any, any comment on the flagpole at St. Paul's? Can you say one right away, sir?
Yes, Mr. Lardy, there is a flagpole out by the comfort station and by the playground. It's got a 30-foot pole, I believe.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Lardy. Any other comments on Zoom?
They said, here's some business. I just made a comment about, I was in contact with Mr. Felicity, I wrote a text, and Craig Manning will ask, they were priced at $7,000 on the study. So if we did, if we vote to support that, we had $7,000, not on the 4, 750, I stated in the document.
I say, touche.
Good work, and thanks to them.
Thank you.
You moved the present.
Do we have to request a poll that event? Or do we have a figure?
All right. Anything we want, first of all, business, approve of Minnesota's previous proposal for this agreement? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes, regular meeting of July 21st, 2022?
I agree.
Second, on favor, I have a motion passed. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes? The special meeting involves ninth, 2022. I have a motion, second, motion on favor, I have a motion passed. And I want to inform you that we have an item on the 21st of July 21st, 2022 agenda, which will bring all construction, Nassau Boulevard, Railroad, Parking Lot, 21, there are discussions on the site, and I posted.
Well, I discussed this last time, and the only thing I had is I have no interest in spending funds on Nassau Boulevard until the Maryland Avenue reaches a state of full remedy. So because of that, and because of what I discussed last time, I would not be supportive of number one on the deferred agenda. On that issue, I request that it be deferred again, not that we actually take a vote on it, because if I understand correctly, we don't actually have the full documentation in support of the vote to construction. I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that, that, we have all the authorities for this.
I think we, I think it's fully not, we do have full documentation.
Well, if anybody who didn't get it.
I apologize for that.
No, that's all right.
No, that's all right.
We have documentation as well.
Yes.
And the other question is, I believe that there was an email with regard to putting Bishop lighting. So the question is, are we combining it to one project?
So two things. If you want to do, Mr. Bellmore, the builder's historian, suggested we consider that, seriously consider that. It was not part of this original component, but it would be added on to the wall after the fact. So it doesn't have to be, it's not a constructible piece per se, it's something that may have honored a fixture. And also, I believe, and the school can directly follow this. This project is already funded through the capital program, not necessarily requiring community rental funds, that's an option. If we want this, if the mayor were to approve it and we wanted to use it, the funds are available. This is really in capital program, irregardless of what we requested of community rental funding.
And Rob, just to add to that, you know, if we go back to the timeline, when this project was awarded and went out to bid several times, the approved budget that was awarded for this was $374,000. And then went out to bid April 28, 2021. The first award came in at $312,200 for the first, for the lowest bidder on that project. And then that was for the construction of the entire walls we can take down and recomplete. As for redirection and the help by the mayor and his request, we decided to redesign that and actually redesigned the walls to do a rehab project. And then was rebid again. And that brings us to this award of the $153,600. And that includes the planker on top of the wall. So we believe that the cost savings on that from the original award is $158,600. So there is a cost savings versus demolishing and the restoration of the walls.
Actually, from, I don't have the numbers quoted. I know the school probably do a little better than me. Back in May, when we postponed this project, deferred it for first time, the project value was about $974. And we went to big committee, 315 and 312. We, at that point, we leased, we were down from $934 to $400,000. We released back to about $500,000 back into the general capital reserve. So the original price tag on this wall as a rebuild was almost a million dollars. We knocked it down by $574. And now we knocked it down by another $158,000. So we're down to a very small component of the original estimate. And this restoration project now, now it's whole, now it's your rebuild.
So what you're saying is, if we delay it more, it will cost.
That's the best possible number I see, down to three.
It is a bargain, yeah.
That's not a material.
You're talking about the $12,600, I'm sorry, I stepped out when you were talking about that. That is for some lights, what we're talking about?
Those are the urns on top of the wall.
Come on.
We've bid, no, we've bid the project.
Enough with the urns, seriously, okay? I mean, this whole thing, we deferred it last year when we came in, okay? It's a beautiful station. I understand the walls, you know, coming down, you might have to do something with that. But urns, okay? All right, come on.
Do you want to put forward with it the brick wall and not the urns at this point? I think those are easy to separate.
Yes, we actually did it out, the urns as an option, so that we could point, award the first part at 141 and not do, if you want to do that. The urns were only in there because when the project started, it was a historic restoration and they were considered part of the history. So you can, at some future date, add urns if you wish, or leave them off completely. But you do not have to pass the project with the urns, you can just do items 1 through 4 and leave off option five.
Yeah.
Get the work list and that.
Well, listen, if you have to do stuff for the historic, you know, to act what it was, it should all be included. And the cost of those urns is nothing. You can ask whoever's in the block.
Did I actually come from it, did you come from St. Tampa? Did your residents come from it?
Well, so it's a very resource, you're right. So the only distance I see now is if you want to provide lighting, you have to install a conduit.
That's fine.
You have to provide the conduit. That's the only extra I can see. Everything else is included in the price.
That's fine.
And you have an excellent price here for doing the restoration. And we expect the station the way it was originally designed. And if Bill Bellmore is in the audience, if you must make any comments, you can make a comment.
I have nothing else to say.
Are we, are you agree that this should be restored?
I'm sorry?
Do you agree that this wall should be restored?
Absolutely.
Well, I'm happy that he does, but I mean, we couldn't restore every part of the town. I mean, the walls need to be repaired.
It's the ready.
Yeah, I know you were told to. But I mean, let's get the walls taken care of. Forget about the urns and whatever the hell else we might have.
I'll make a motion to authorize the brick wall restoration.
1 through 4.
1 through 4 for 141,000.
Revisit the urns?
Second, do you want to call for those?
Yeah, I have a motion.
I agree that a motion is seconded.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
I agree this motion, and that's the price, again, it's responsible, 141, 141.
141.
That's the bid you got, right?
Yes, I hope so.
Okay, let's go. We have a motion to approve the second.
We already did the second.
Second.
To say to the.
And a second.
All in favor?
Big motion?
See, then, I'll make, I'll make it for the walls.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye. One and two?
No.
Two no's?
No.
Two no's?
Two no's.
Four.
Motion passed.
You know, we need to mention that there was a change of dates on number 24, correct? And fireworks thing. We have to put on the record that they moved it on date earlier, correct? So it should read Saturday, September 3rd, with a rain date of Sunday, September 4th. We just note that change.
Saturday?
Saturday.
So, okay, so it's the days of the walls.
And I have number 14. We're amending that to be $87,000. $94,750, 14 is now $87,000.
Is it exactly $87,000, what's even?
It is $1,000,000. What else? Your changes?
The motion to approve the second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
We have a more valuable business.
Yes.
Suspend the board rules before they can put a resolution down in accordance with court.
I can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay. With regard to making a resolution to suspend the board rules and place on the agenda for a vote on a matter of personnel as set forth by the Mr. Swasey relating to change into civil service, potential civil service titles in order that he can fill two roles.
So the two titles, document, this is an email for the board.
Yes.
I sent it kind of late this afternoon, but basically, in the finance department, in the budget, there was a title funded called the account clerk. This, when I've discussed this, we've gone through the civil service list twice. And we're not funding personnel, there are very few, only two people, three people responded. We'd like to change that to senior account clerk. Rearrange the salaries, only 5Ks, non-material to the budget. And we'd like to, we can now cam the stat list, so will it make a change? And the other one is, Mr. Bulleye and I just talked about. They have a typist clerk position that is really, the duty's more aligned with the rec leader. The salary difference is about $2,200. Also a material, and they're making a much more flexible position in his department. So since they're both in the budget under the old titles, we'd like to ask the board permission to change these two titles.
I move that we improve.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go on to non-agenda. Any citizens, comments on non-agenda? Non-agenda. Anything you want to talk about? Parks, fishing, justice, attorney?
Just one quick thing, I think it's nice to have, oh, someone has a hand.
Hi, Mary Schenon, 6 London Street. I just wanted to thank the board for the amnesty program. I benefited, I benefited in peace of mind that now I go to sell my house in the future, it won't be chaos trying to get a oil-to-gas conversion done and an extra shower stall. So I thank, now seriously, I thank you very much, Mr. Jiminelli. Your staff, Barbara and Irene and Mr. Deli were amazing. It was such a quick process. If the board ever thinks to do this again, I would highly recommend that maybe Mr. Jiminelli do a meeting so that you can discuss with the people that would hear what it entails. I think it's much simpler than I would have expected. And people are afraid. They're afraid what they're going to look for, what they're going to find, what they're going to charge. And I think it was a wonderful idea, and I think it was a win-win for everybody. So thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for all the work you do on the board, it's a hard job. Thank you.
Thanks, big help. It just appeared, we went for one tier, it was a very smooth process, and the people were very nice.
Anyone on Zoom or anybody in the audience?
Mr. Lawrie, you have your hand up?
Non-agenda.
Speak, non-agenda.
Yes, sorry, 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 you have a few more minutes, I suppose the bridge cleared out. Maybe Mr. Boyke could give some information on the ash trees. I know about a week ago, a tree fell, an ash tree, apparently that was dying from this of falling, a pole in the Bronx, and so much, I'm concerned, we're only dead trees in the village. I know, you had said last time, the village guys are taking down the smaller ones, but it's to have to come to the board for financing to get someone in to do the large trees. So we can just elaborate on, maybe the timing of some of that work?
We're currently putting together specifications to go out for a public bid for removable ash trees. We're working closely with Harder Services, Hank Harder's been very helpful to us, very beneficial in giving us the guidance. We hope to have something out for bid in the next month or so.
Is there a target, trees, you know, coming down?
There's always a chance the trees are going to come down. It's difficult to identify which ones may come down. The ones that have lost their leaves earliest are the ones that are going to come down first. So those are the ones that our guys are taking a look at. If our guys see any trees that they feel is in imminent danger, we still have some funds available on our emergency tree removal contract, and we can bring a contractor in to get those trees down while we're waiting to get this other contract out to bid.
All right, great, thank you.
Anyone else?
I've already come up a third time, so I don't have to do this for the next couple of meetings.
That's a charm.
Yeah. Dump permits for pickups, if the board could discuss that at some point in the near future for those of us whose primary vehicle is a pickup truck.
Makes a good point.
I meant to bring that up, actually. Thanks for raising, I was going to ask Mr. DeRosa, he could, before the next meeting, maybe take a look at, this is an issue that's been repeatedly raised by residents. We have more and more residents with pickup trucks as their primary vehicle, and they want to have the same rights to use the dump that everybody else does. So if you can, I think in the past, a concern has been policing it and the concern that commercial users would come in and leave. So if you could take a look at how we're doing with that, what our system is, if we're having compliance, how we can lift up restrictions for residents so that residents with pickup trucks will be able to have the same, you know, opportunities we have to drop off their trash.
Yeah, they're well put, Mary. Yeah, I just actually got a couple of texts on that this past week. So I'm glad the board loved me, Mary, you're taking the other well.
Yes, I'm pretending, Janelle and John are only working on a plan for the dump, for the fire train facilities. We're just going to cooperate, play readers and do a trade away before the dump. We're interested in that issue.
How long deadline do you think that is?
It's hard to say right now, we just started working on this plan just a few days ago. So it's in the works, we're going to talk to the chief, Mr. Erner and, you know, Mr. DeRosa will then come up with a plan to put that all together. So we can actually monitor the area and issue permits to residents, whether it's a car, a truck, a vehicle, whatever it may be, we'll have a motion permit to the residents on that. All right, we just want a little more control of the area.
Only in a month, we can have an answer for residents on this?
Yeah, the goal is to make sure that people don't take the permit off of their vehicle so the license plate reader will match to a database. So we know the vehicle coming in matches. We'll also have a camera on the driver, in the contents of the vehicle. And we're also redesigning the dump area to help us with the fire pumping training facility that was recommended by the Fire Safety Committee. I've actually seen the design, we need some final touches for input from the fire chiefs and we just make sure that attorney raises the location of fire cars and dump before presenting to the board consideration.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, either in the audience, who wants to?
Evening again, Ken Short. I made a comment on environmental impact study. Is that going to be done in regards to St. Paul's in order to cover, you know, state environmental and local environmental regulations?
Once a project is approved, right, whether it be for construction, repurposing, or demolition, that's when you file for that.
That's when you file, but eventually it will be done.
Ask it to that.
Ask, obviously, yeah.
Plus, some of the national register, register of stored places. So there's a special box you have to check on the environmental law form.
And you'll agree that as part of that study, we will reflect in relationship to what is done on the building and the cost thereof. In other words, like if they're working on rooms or whatever, they have to contain whatever dust, especially a lot of light dust. It has to be self-contained, you can't go out into the.
Well, there's an environmental review, drawings have to be submitted, specifications, describes what you're doing, and then they do the review. So again, that's down the road.
Right.
That's at the end of this year.
As I said, a lot of this is down the road, you know, so.
Well, that's when you actually have a construction plan, and people have voted on it and said this is what they want, so that's when you get the actual drawings of the project. So that's down the road, that's not the end of the year.
Yeah, once that change, in other words, in my, in my respect here as far as quality of finance, I have to change that one of those numbers. If the environmental impact studies, that you could do this, this, and this, on top of this, this.
It'll be part of the scope, it's part of the, hopefully, we have the estimators on board, they're going to be sophisticated enough to put some sort of allowance for that, for that cost.
We definitely waited for that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, Zoom, the audience?
I just have one, you know, it's great to have opinions. I think that helps, that's where we all learn from each other. And I just want to thank everybody for the different opinions. Whether you agree with the person or not, I think the respect aspect is so important because we're all neighbors. And I just recommend that that respect always goes forward for us.
So you have other comments, I make a motion to close immediately.
Second motion.